We will now call the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There were three presentations made elsewhere. One was for the Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month presented to North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. The other was for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week presented to the Lompoc Police Chief for April 12th through the 18th. And a proclamation for DMV Donate Life California was mailed to a local representative of the DMV Donate Life. City Manager, report please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few tonight. The city received a grant from the State Library for $5,000. This is to be used for digital materials such as eBooks, e-audiobooks, streaming music, and movies that patrons can access from their home with their library card. Another reminder to go online and fill out the 2020 census which is going on right now. This is critical to the city, and I brought it up before, but it's critical to the city and its futureability for federal, state, and federal, both federal and state grants. I've already done it. It took about five minutes. Looking at the current completion, we're about 55% completion rate for the county, so we need definitely some more people to step up and fill out the forms on the census. A reminder is that we still have our community hotline to call for any questions related to the COVID or other issues pertaining to the different emergency orders. That number is 805-875-8071. We get about 100 calls a day coming to that. Some of the top five calls to the center that we're getting, the numbers of COVID-19 cases at the prison, as of today, that was 99 inmates with the virus, if I got it correctly. During the rains, we had quite a few calls about the homeless and shelters that might be available. This is a difficult option at this time, partly due to required social distancing. Some of the shelters are not accepting new people. The county is working on plans for both the north and south sections of the county, and they hope to have something ready soon for the homeless. Many calls have come in concerning utility bill paying. The postcards with the information on them have been mailed to the public, so they should have been receiving them by now. It has numbers and explanations on the cards, number, quite a few numbers of utilities, different places in the city that they can call and ask for other information. We also had a few calls asking to be connected to the governor and the president, as some of the people calling in wanted to voice their concerns, but we weren't able to fulfill those. So, we did our best. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, we move on to extension of cancellation of commissions, committees, board meetings, with exception of Planning Commission.
Yeah, that was the other part of my-
All right.
-of my report. Sorry, forgot about that part.
It's all right. It was, it was there, and if we needed to have any other reports, but that's continued. All right. Next up is public comment on consent calendar items. You may call in at 805-
I'm sorry, Mayor, to interrupt.
Do you have something to report on that?
Well, for the extension, I just need to know if this is what the council wants to do, since we weren't sure when the first, I want to say, the cancellation period was going to end, when we were going to be able to go back to normal. So, we need to know tonight whether we're going to extend it for the next month. So, we'll have to keep doing it on monthly basis. So, sort of a straw vote poll, if you want to continue and have the same commission meetings that were postponed to go the next month through May.
Anyone want to stop? Councilmember Starbuck.
When does our emergency declaration come, come up? The 16th, May?
Yeah, I have to go back and look. It'll be the, the next, it'll come up in May again.
Wouldn't that be the time we could do the commissions and all? We could go ahead and-
Well, these were to go through the end of April, so by that time, we would have been behind already.
So, you're asking for us to potentially agree to go through at least till the next meeting where we could declare it officially as part of an extension potentially to the state of emergency? Councilmember Mosby.
Let's make it so.
You got a second?
It's a second.
All right, so you have three.
Thank you.
Alrighty, consent calendar. This is your chance to call in. It's 805-875-8201. You will have three minutes to discuss an item on the consent calendar. You should mute your TV, radio, or computer so that we don't get the feedback. While we're waiting to see if there are any calls, consent calendar is considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Floor has been open for consent calendar calls. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on a consent calendar? Do we have any emails on consent calendar? I do believe we received one on item 10, but we all received it. Okay. So, there's no need to read that in. And seeing no one call in on consent calendar, we will move to discussion by council. Councilmember Mosby.
A member from the public commented to me that could the phone number be repeated, what the call-in number is here, or made more available? They said sometimes when it was, finally got to them, public comment had already been closed. It was hard to get through the system. So, if that number could be, I don't know if-
Put on the TV screen for those-
On the TV screen, or the mayor, maybe you can repeat it more often, or-
All right.
Some people are on the radio as well. They don't have it, so.
Sure. Once again, the number is 805-875-8201. Seeing no calls, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Mosby.
I just had a quick question, statement to make on, on number eight, and a question on number 10. Since Brian-
Is someone from planning here to answer the question on item eight?
Let me, some of them are in their, in their offices. Let me try and get hold of them real quick.
Like, number eight, or number 10, I could ask, there may be something more for the city attorney on this, because more of a, well, if you, either way. But my, my question is, being a full-service city, many of our positions are allocated out through the utilities and stuff, so is this based on allocations or title? It seems that we have a layer of complications, probably more so than most, most positions.
The way that we have it set out in the proposed plan that's before you today is based on the position title and their duties, or the position title, the position title.
So, the complexity of it is, even though their title might not say it, but if a person isn't here, you directly affect the utility in certain cases. Let's say as an admin, 70 to 80% is funded by utilities. Naturally, if the city manager wasn't here, we drastically affect the utilities. So, I don't know, is there a way to look into that to make sure? I mean, we have a layer of complexity here, more so, even though they're not directly employed under utility, they are.
So, you're saying, if I understand, that our policy exempts utility employees. There could be employees that do work for the utilities and are vital to the utilities that are outside the utility department. And so, should those employees also be exempt from the leave? They certainly don't fall under the language that we have in the policy right now, but if you wanted us as staff to look into whether they could be added, then we can, we can look into that. But I would recommend that you adopt the policy tonight so that we get the employees that are exempted in this policy exempted and not delay on that.
I could do, what, I guess, as I'll, as I bring it forward, I'll make that, that motion or add, or whoever might have consent that we have, that, I mean, it's, it's vital in our cases, as, as treasury is an example. Without them, utilities, what do we have? Right? Okay, so, if I can get the question to number eight.
Yeah, what's the question?
Okay, so, number eight is just funding for a study, but there isn't any funding to do any of the projects, correct?
Right now, you're correct. There is no funding. That's part of the grant, is to look into improvements that could have funding mechanisms, reach out to the community, look at areas on H and Ocean that could potentially be good projects. I think I have brought up some of those projects already to, to staff, but we're not looking at doing things that are going to be very costly, because those projects would be very difficult to build.
I think it's important to understand, if we're doing something like this, that whoever's reviewing it, sometimes they get confused and think we're San Luis, or Carmel, or Santa Barbara, that if they're coming in as, as RRM, as San Luis Obispo, they might look at it as Lompoc, and if they're moving forward, understanding, whatever we're doing, I think, needs to make sure that it's, meets the pocketbook for Lompoc. You know, it's not to say that we're going to put pavers everywhere, up and down all the streets, but as you move forward, understanding that, and also that we don't get locked in a position that we're coming up with ideas that are so over-incovering financially so that nobody can afford to develop in town anymore. I think it's important that you move forward, and we have to put another $33,000 of what Measure A or General Fund money to, to apply for this grant. So, it's every bit of precious money. But I just wanted to make that for the record. I don't-
I, I, when we interviewed RRM and a couple other firms, I made that very apparent that we weren't looking for something that just had pretty pictures, not something that's going to sit on the shelf, and also things that could be implemented without huge expenses. So, they are aware that going into this particular grant opportunity, it's the first time that Lompoc has received this grant, so we're excited to get going on it. But Councilmember Mosby, very good point, and we are going to be reaching out to the public as well as staff. It'll go to Planning Commission and City Council meetings, so we'll be able to rein it back if, if it gets a little out of control. For example, you said pavers, that's a good example. So, yeah, duly noted.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve consent calendar with the addition of the city attorney on looking into the allocation of employees.
So, I do believe we may have gotten a call regarding public comment and a delayed, so before we take the motion, if that caller is still on the line, we'll open the floor for public comments since delayed time.
Hello, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Jim Yant, and I live across from Ryan Park, and this pertains to the fireworks on the Fourth of July. Ryan Park is a park, not a fairground. We put up at the Flower Festival, we put up at the Spring Arts, whatever. The only positive things that happened at Ryan Park are the AIDS bicycle ride and the dog show. I've talked to numerous neighbors, and all of them do not want to have this at the park. Hold it out there at the 90, the theater, out there, the drive-in theater. Keep it away from the residents. I mean, I know it's been at the high school for 30-some-odd years, but we don't need a new tradition starting at Ryan Park, which is nothing but negative stuff as far as our, my neighbors are concerned. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Is that the only call we received? All right, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the consent calendar. Councilmember Mosby had a motion with an adaptation to review it for impact to other positions related to those that might be exempted. Do I have a second? Councilmember Cordova.
I just had to, a question, and I wanted to point out on item number six in regards to the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program. That agreement, or that staff report said that it had to be submitted to Caltrans by April 17th, but is that going to be a problem, being that we would be signing in the ordinance today? I don't know if anybody noticed that. I mean, it's on the staff report, so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't an issue.
I don't believe it's-
It said the city, in order to be eligible for the funds, it would need to be delivered to Caltrans for final form, in its final form by April 17th.
Mayor and council, I inquired about that to Richard Fernbach. He said he contacted Caltrans, and they would be willing to accept a draft by April 17th, which he submitted, but then this will be approving the final version. So, he, according to his conversation with Caltrans, we are okay.
In that case, I will second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify, sorry, Mayor, that the motion, as it pertains to item 10, is to approve the policy that's drafted, but then also request that staff come back with information about the allocation program.
Yes. All right. Clarity, no questions. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The staff presentation that is on the agenda has been pulled and will now be given tonight. We will now move to oral communications. This is where you have three minutes to discuss any city matter that is not on the agenda. If there is a matter on the agenda that you would like to discuss, it is preferred that you wait till that, but we can also take comments regarding that. The number is 805-875-8201. You're reminded to mute your computer, radio, or TV when you call in. Again, you will have three minutes to discuss a city matter. 805-875-8201. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to an issue regarding city matters? Seeing no one rise, I will ask if we have any email commentary of general city matters. We do not. The number once again is 805-875-8201, and you would need to mute your computer, radio, or TV. That is no calls, so we will close oral communications. I'll remind the public, there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting to call in, and you will have an opportunity after each item is presented to call in at the number, so we will repeat it at that time. Our next agenda item is number 11, approval of fiscal year 2020, 2021, draft annual action plan and budgets for the Community Development Block Grant, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus and Human Services Program, adoption of resolution number 6321 (20), and Community Development Program Manager Chanel Ovallier will present.
Good evening, City Council, Honorable Mayor-
City staff-
-and our community. Again, my name is Chanel Ovallier, and I am the City of Lompoc's Community Development Program Manager. Tonight, as you just heard, I am seeking council's approval for the CDBG, the CDBG Coronavirus and the Human Service Program budgets and authorization to submit those budgets to HUD along with the annual action plan. So, the primary objective of the CDBG program is to develop viable communities to low and moderately low-income persons by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. Some very important funding criteria to note is that CDBG cannot be used to replace any city or state-funded functions. CDBG CV funds, which are the CDBG Coronavirus funds, can only be used to, used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus epidemic. The human service donations are restricted for only human service activities, no administrative costs. All funding must benefit low-income persons, and expenditures not in compliance with HUD must be paid back by the General Fund. Community involvement is very important. It's a very important factor in identifying projects with our CDBG program. To meet this objective, we held a pre-application workshop, needs assessment, and a public hearing tonight. The City of Lompoc is entitled to receive $5,529,165. Of that funding, 20%, there is a 20% cap for program administration and a 15% cap on public services for our human service program. And then, the remainder amount is required by HUD to be used for capital projects. We have additional funding of program income of $208,000. And again, even with this portion of funding, we have a 20% cap, and then the rest is to be used for capital projects. We also have human service utility customer donations in the total of $14,000, and this is required to be used 100% toward human service activities, again, not toward any admin costs. And then, we have a new grant that we just received notification on last, the beginning of this month. It's this Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Grant. This was made available to us by the CARES Act and is in the amount of $311,290, and is solely for the use of COVID-19 response. This slide reflects a breakdown of the total CDBG funding and how it will be used. As stated again, we're only able to use 20% for admin, so at the top there, the program administration of the 134470 consists of legal services, salaries, and when I say legal services, let me go back, that is just for fair housing services, which is required under our program. It includes salaries, supplies, loan administration, including the management and servicing of 37 active CDBG loans and monitoring. Staff is recommending council approve this budget as reflected there. Staff is also recommending that council approve the budget for the capital funds in the amount of $465,08, and the Housing Emergency Repair Program that will be given to Catholic charities to do the program for us, to assist us with the program and our human service program, and then again, the COVID-19 response program. Here is a list of the agencies that we received applications from that we are recommending council approve for public service and our human service program. Please note that the city, we received applications that were over the amount that we have to allocate, but with the community's donations through the utility, Human Service Donation Fund, we were able to fund the agencies you see there. So, tonight, we're holding this public hearing to approve the 2021 Action Plan to Submit to HUD, which includes CDBG, CDBG CV, and human service funding and activities, as well as CDBG-funded capital improvement projects. In conclusion, the Fiscal Year 2020-21 Action Plan was adopted, was posted for public review on the city's website and in the Lompoc Record in Spanish and English for a 30-day- in Spanish and English for a 30-day public comment period that ends tonight. Copies of the signed City Council Resolution, signed by HUD and signed HUD certifications, minutes of this council meeting, and any public comments or written correspondence received during the 30-day public comment period will be reviewed and forward to HUD for the Fiscal Year 2021 Action Plan. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Chanelle, a quick question. The capital improvement projects, we're in phase four of this. This is all the retrofit of bathrooms at our parks with Americans with Disability. How many phases are there in this?
We are hoping to get all of our parks up to par. So I can't give you the exact number of phases, but what we're hoping to do with our program is fix our parks, get our communities, our community looking good, and bringing our communities and their families together.
Well, I mean, that's what all this money, we're dedicating our capital improvement project money to.
Most of it is to that, and then another $50,000 is going toward our housing, which will be for emergency housing repairs.
Any more questions for Councilmember Rosby?
So on the capital projects, you're taking admin, 20% admin on that as well?
Yes, we are.
When the project is done, is there admin collected for the project being done as well?
No, it's collected during the time. So as we, so whoever is working on the parks project, for the hours that they are worked, they will be paid with the payroll for those hours worked.
So who's overseeing the project, the bathroom project?
I could respond to that. So typically, our activity delivery costs with regards to the capital projects. In the past, you might recall, in prior years, we utilized an actual separate human being, another person oversaw those projects. So we had a whole position designated to it. She left. So for this phase of the project, we wanted to make sure we had it budgeted so we could offset general fund costs. So for example, we have a position that's within the city that any hours spent on that should be charged to CDBG. And so anything spent on that specific project may or may not, typically, it doesn't even use, I would say, 60% of whatever we allocate towards it. But we have to budget it because if for some reason Chanelle on her own can't get this project done, can't get it implemented, we need to go outsourcing and find ourselves someone who can oversee that project. There's Davis Bacon wage requirements, construction oversight. There's a lot that goes on with it, and with our city's limited staffing, we can't do it on our own in-house at times. So luckily, we've been able to balance this one out, and we should be able to get through it, but we have to have that built in there so that we get this done in a timely fashion, should the need arise. Whatever we don't use, if that's the question, it goes to the project. Every year, I think Councilmember Starbuck, your question is, okay, this is phase four. What phase is the next one, the next one? It's just going to keep rolling forward until we tackle all of them. So the last years, we had money left over. We roll it forward and we use it on the next project as well. So our capital project amount is never enough to do one comprehensive project. JM Parks restroom, when we get to that one, that one's a cool million all on its own. So as we try to couple these projects with other funding sources that come out, so statewide park program that will come out in the fall again, we hope to be able to match CDBG funds as part of a leveraging tool to tell them, hey, we're going to kick in some of our CDBG dollars towards this project. It should make us more competitive. So how many phases? It really does depend on you guys. But we had nine parks, I think it was nine to 13 parks, identified in the analysis that we did. So we could get all the way up to phase 14.
So my question is, what percentage of the bathroom build-out will be going to admin? Whether it's, so if you hire-
We've allocated 20% because that's the most.
Okay. So you have your 20%. So what I was getting at, so there is another person, like another department, that is well going to do the project, it's going to stay within you guys. So it didn't like be transferred to Park, which again, would have a 20%. There's only one bite at the apple here for the admin. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's accurate.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for public comment. The phone number to call in is 805-875-8021. It will be on item 11. You will have three minutes to speak. It's 805-875-8021. Please remember to mute your computer, radio, or TV if you call in. Do we have any in-room? Please bring yourself forward.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. Can you give the community any insight to what type of response on the COVID funds would be utilized? Or what that $300,000 would be used, or how? Thank you.
Thank you. We will, when we close public comment, we'll bring it back to you. Were there any emails regarding this item, City Clerk?
No, ma'am.
All right. Once again, the number to call in is 805-875-8021. And seeing no one call in, we will close public comment on that and bring it back for questions. And Ms. Ovallier, will you please share with us what portion the CDBG funds are for COVID and how we have requested that be utilized?
Okay, I'm currently putting together a utility grant assistance program, and I'd like to bring it to council on your May 19th meeting for review and approval. We're hoping to assist about 1,000 monthly billings with this program. It's really important that people know that this funding can only be used for people that were directly affected with COVID. So it will not be the type of program that is just assisting people that are delinquent on their utility bills. But I'm really happy that we received this funding because it will help people that were directly impacted with COVID.
Councilmember Mosby.
What other options might there be? Is that the only option, the utility?
We can use, we kind of went toward utilities because we heard what council was in their discussions in previous meetings. You can use the COVID-19 funding for anything to prepare for the coronavirus, to prevent the coronavirus, or to directly assist. But whatever we do use it for, it has to directly assist for our program, low-income persons. So they would have to qualify to get the grant or for us to use this program for anything else. It would have to qualify by being beneficial to low-income persons. That's the only way we're able to use this funding.
So what, besides utilities, what other?
One other thing that we were also thinking about is possibly purchasing a generator for our EOC.
But our EOC, how would that qualify because of town?
It would qualify because it would be used. If it's a generator and we're buying it for the EOC, if we need to use that facility for emergency operations, or, and also because we would have that facility always. We can designate it for a EOC for even in the future. And because it's the senior center, it is benefiting low-income persons.
So that money, you're going to bring this back for opportunities to program? Is that what you're saying?
So I'd like to put together, if it, I mean, I'd like to put together the program for the utility grant assistance program. But if there's something else that you would like for me to explore or put together, it would be nice if you were to tell me now to, so I could start working on it.
I was trying to ask to find out what's on the list. I don't know what's all on the list, the Gambi program.
So I participated in a poll that was given, and the question was to all CDBG grant applicants and entitlements, what they were planning to use the funding for. Most entities are using the funding for direct assistance to people that are impacted by this, but they're using it for like mortgage assistance, rental assistance, utility assistance. Some are using it for, to help keep jobs in some of the local businesses. But most of them are all, like if you look at the percentages, like about 50%, more than 50%, they're all using it toward directly assisting toward persons that were impacted with rental, mortgage, utility assistance.
So I guess there's a question to the council. I didn't realize there was a whole list of opportunities for this, not just utilities, but I know utilities was a point of concern the last time, but I guess there are other avenues.
Thanks for that clarity. Did I see a signal that we have a phone call regarding this item?
Sorry, they hung up.
Okay, all right. So I do know that we were exploring FEMA dollars that might be available to us for the generators, and I guess we just haven't had any direction back regarding that?
Well, we're still trying. It's, this is a weird, strange emergency we're in. It's not a flood, a fire, earthquake. It's an invisible situation that we're fighting. So the current rules don't apply to some of these things. So we are investigating what types of emergency funding can we get? And it's not a lot at this point, not just us, but it's like the county has ability to get more because they're operating the county EOC. So they, they're doing the full-fledged EOC down there. So there are some funding mechanisms for them, but without a physical, you know, physical by meaning something you can see, emergency, the FEMA hasn't been allowing us to do those types of reimbursements. So we could try, but if they say no, then the city's on the hook for the cost.
Well, given these monies were provided through CDBG, I personally still think the best avenue is to at least have a presentation about utilizing it to assist those being impacted with their utility bills. I think that is an appropriate use of the funds, especially given we don't really have a general fund reserve in order to address it. So I'm relieved we have gotten some of those funding. So that, that's my opinion on that. Councilmember Cordova.
I like the idea of it being considered for other things. But when I think about the max output, I guess, of the funds and how many people could we reach, I think maybe the utility portion of it might be more far-reaching to the community because it helps out, I don't know, I guess based on your presentation, we'll know in the near future of, are we talking, you know, a certain amount, like a max amount per family, per household, that kind of thing. When you're talking about mortgage relief or you're talking about some other stuff, it's, you're looking at a higher price tag. And so just in consideration, for me individually, in consideration of how many people can we help, I would think that maybe the utilities would be a great way because that is a big help for people too in their home. And again, that money, again, kind of reciprocates back into our utilities and our, and the services we provide as a city. And so, I don't know, something to consider, especially since Councilmember Starbuck did mention it at the last meeting, that he wanted to do something in that avenue too. But I know that this would restrict just COVID-impacted residents, but it would be a big help. So I'm open to all ideas, but I think far-reaching, the utility one would be a little more far-reaching, so.
I was planning on putting together, when I do the staff report, giving like three or four different options on how we could do it and to show you what, per CDBG guidelines, what we can do, and then ask the council to choose from those options or suggest other options. But within our division, we also felt the same, thinking that this funding will go further this way, and then this way we can report back to our government and tell them, look, we've helped this many households. And I also want you all to know that even though we're saying it is solely for low-income households, we are also opening it up because there is a portion that can be used for those households that are a little bit over the guideline, and we are hoping to also help those people too. And again, they have to show some type of evidence. We're asking for evidence showing that they were affected by COVID. It can't just be, we're low-income, can you help us? Or our, our utility bill is delinquent. We need to have the evidence showing that there was some financial impact. They were, something to show in order for them to receive this grant.
Councilmember Mosby.
You got to answer my question, but would you bring this back? I think it'd be important that you, we saw some numbers, how many people were delinquent. It wasn't as much as we thought. So I mean, this would go a long way, but then again, if somebody can't keep their house, they're not worried about paying their utilities. So I think a couple of options out there, maybe dividing this up a little bit so it's not just in one section, but maybe you could spread it. Give us a couple of options, and maybe we could program some money in a couple of different places. Because again, if somebody's losing, can't pay their rent, can't pay their mortgage, help them with utilities, but they don't have a place to live in, it doesn't exist.
Hey, if I could, just to add a little to the conversation. When they enacted SB 998, we kind of got pretty far behind on our disconnects in utility billing. And we realized that our utility system wouldn't handle the cutoffs the way we were going to do it. And then also with the waiver of not charging late fees and penalties and not disconnecting people, just keep that in mind as you do it. I know there's going to be a lot of people that are quite a ways behind in their utility bills, so.
So I just would like to add, if it's okay, on a rental assistance program, that's a very involved program. We don't have the staff to do that type of program. I can just say that. That's why we give our Home TBRA program, which is a rental assistance program, we give those funds to the County Housing Authority to administer. There is a lot of regulatory requirements that come along with CDBG. Just because they're giving us the money doesn't mean they've written off all of their requirements. So mortgage assistance, believe me, we looked at it, mortgage, rental assistance. We want to help in the way that the community needs the help. The utility assistance is much easier for us to do when you only have one staff person in the CDBG area who also manages your home buyer assistance program, who also manages your human services program, your capital projects, oversees our loan portfolio. It would be very challenging to implement such a program without hiring additional staff to do that. Another point I want to make before we want to make any kind of changes to what we're doing beyond utility assistance, we evaluated this to make sure we were doing something that we could actually do. And the, if you change this, if you want to do rental and you come back, so if Chanelle comes back on the 19th and you guys say, let's do some rental assistance, we'll hire someone, we don't care, we're going to do it. Fine. We'll have to do a substantial amendment to our action plan. The legislative due date is the same. So something to consider. I don't know if we can amend this to kind of say just COVID assistance in general, and then kind of amended in that way to kind of give us some flexibility to make changes down the road. But whatever we state in the action plan is what we have to do. Anything that we change, we have to come back. We do a public hearing process and things of that nature. So it could cause some delays, and then obviously, it all costs money. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you both. So the item is approval of the Draft Annual Action Plan and budget for the CDBG and the CDBG Coronavirus. CDBG coronavirus and the human service program for adoption of 6321 parentheses 20. I will move that we accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. The next item is discussion of potential cancellation, postponement, or other modification for the 2020 Fourth of July fireworks show due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For those of you watching, after the presentation, we will go to public comment. That number is 805-875-8021. Please be prepared to call in. Oh, 8201, sorry, 80, 8201. I got dyslexic when I wrote it down for the 1800 time. All right. You don't look like Christie.
Good evening, mayor, city council, members of the audience and people at home that are watching. I'm Mario Guerrero, Recreation Manager for the City of Lompoc, and I'm here for, tonight for the discussion of the 2020 Fourth of July fireworks show. And we have a slide presentation for you, then I'll be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion. In February of this year, the staff evaluated various sites as potential venues for the 2020 fireworks show, but due to the construction out at Huck Stadium, an alternate site had to be, arrived to, and on March 3rd, council approved the use of Ryan Park as such a venue for the 2020 Fourth of July fireworks show. On March 3rd following, or on late in March, due to the COVID outbreak pandemic, the governor issued an executive order requiring residents to heed orders of guidance, state and local public officials in handling, but not limiting to stay at home except to conduct essential activities and services. And advise residents to practical, practice social distancing, went away from home. And on, and on April 5th, the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department issued an order banning live performance venues until May 4th, 2020, which could be extended at a later date. So the staff's returning to city council tonight for discussion, and there's the three areas that we wanted to discuss. One is the cancellation. Due to the uncertainty of the such orders being lifted, staff has reached out, reached out to the poly, or the pyrotechnic group that puts on the fireworks show to discuss the cancellation policy. And if we canceled the show before May 5th, there wouldn't be any financial hardship to the city. Beyond that, we would have to post a $5,000 deposit towards the show for this year. If for some reason we were to cancel, then that $5,000 would be rolled over to the following year for the 2021 show. Postponement, any postponement of the show would have to be decided soon with an alternate date in order to allow foreplanning and the coordination of such event. Or the selection of a different venue and a different type of show. Another option that staff is evaluating is moving the venue to an agriculture field west of the city and changing to high-level mortars that would have a larger blast radius so the residents of town could see the fireworks show. Without, the one, the major concern on that with, with a different type of show without any of the community coming, there would be a gap in funding since we wouldn't be able to charge, and it'd be an estimated $15,000 shortfall that we would need from either fundraising or from the general fund. So Ryan Park, if we stayed the course at Ryan Park and hoped that the orders are lifted, there could be an increase in the fiscal impact potential from the general fund or possibly the more fundraising on a potential $5,000 increase if the Flower Festival does not conduct their, their celebration, their, the discussions that currently evaluating that. The plan on that was to share the cost of the fencing that would be at the park, so we would have to incur all the fiscal impacts to the fencing. If the orders were still in place and we wanted to have the fireworks show from the venue here with, with the current show that would be shot from the size of the mortars, from more of the two-inch mortars, it really wouldn't be able to be seen in a faraway from the surrounding, the surrounding residents would be able to have a good show, but it really wouldn't be able to be seen from people's homes. And with that being said, with, again, with such uncertainty, we have evaluated a couple, a couple other sites. One is a privately owned agriculture land that's the west of town, and the agricultural owner is amenable to allowing the city to use the site. And it sounds like the county fire is open to permitting such, such the site. The only, the request from the property owner was to obtain liability insurance from the city for this event. Another, the location then that we evaluated was River Park located in the second parking lot by the Quanis Lake. County Fire has not provided any feedback on this site as of time of the meeting, but staff, the staff will continue to follow up. City Fire is here tonight to provide any input with regards to fire safety impacts on using that site. And from, we did talk with the Pyro today, and we're provided this map here. These circles are half, half-mile radiuses, which kind of give you that the full, people in this area here would kind of get the full impact of the show, hearing the fireworks, feeling it, kind of just being like at the show. It would be visible from, from farther distance, but it would kind of be often to the distance so that they really wouldn't get the full effect. So just kind of wanted to give a visual of how many people would, would be impacted with that here in the city. One aspect that we, we are considering is working with Cape Hague here, so if we did do one of the alternate sites to have the, the show is typically done, the choreographer to music, so we would continue that, and they'd be able to broadcast that over the radio so the residents could turn, tune in during the show and be able to, to follow Our neighboring jurisdictions, San Maria has already canceled their event, Pismo Beach is discussing the cancellation, or possibly some cities are holding multiple fireworks shows kind of on our, the two locations. If other cities have the ability to have two to three or four around, then the outskirts of town, so the entire town can do it. View the show, it's very costly, but a lot of cities are considering that. And Cambria, they're discussing cancellation at their, at their next board meeting. And with that, I'm here for any questions.
Mario, if the larger mortars are used, does that increase our cost? Does it change the cost of the show by having it and by how much? Because traditionally we've used the smaller because we're having a venue that you can attend, but if we're using larger mortars to have a show that can be seen from home or from a distance, what, have they provided us any idea of what that increase might look like?
The, the show would not increase in cost. With, with the larger mortars, you probably would see a couple minute, the decrease in show because it's just a different, the type of show. But that would be the only difference on that.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
Mario, it seems like two of the options there were in the county jurisdiction. My conversations with one of the landowners or one of the potential decision-makers was that they're currently farming one of those areas, and I don't see how we would hold it as a viable option if they're not going to, if the crop's still going to be there. I think it's kind of smoke and mirrors there if the crop's going to be there through August and September. So again, I don't know if we've thought that forward. The other one is River Park is also in the county jurisdiction. Maybe, are these even viable options or are these just pie in the sky options, just to put more choices on the screen?
With the, with the west side of town, the Bodger property, with the requirements that we gave the owner, I believe it was a 70 by 90 area that would have to be cleared and a driveway through that could get a couple budget trucks through there would be doable for the property.
Again, you know, the, the agriculture that's being, still being planted, have you guys, do you guys have information, will the crop, will they have picked that crop? Because I was told it was fava beans.
We didn't get into it that, that in-depth, the rest of the crop around, but that they ensured then that they could accommodate that request, so they would take out that area of crop to be able to put the fireworks in that area, a designated area in the field.
Now, what, what hoops do we have to jump through to do something like that in the county for the benefit of the city?
If that's a, if that's an option, then it, then we wanted to pursue, and as well as the River Park, then there would be a lot more meetings with the county, with the home, with the landowners by River Park to really sit down and, and do that. But we wanted to give you a couple, a couple other options that were viable that if you wanted staff to pursue, we can.
I appreciate that. You know, the pyrotechnics company is going to require some sort of a commitment or deposit, and what's the date on that? If we had more meetings, would we have enough time? It's April 21st. The last date I heard was sometime in May before you make a commitment. Otherwise, we would lose them. And then the other option was, do we have, or one of the questions is, do we have an obligation with the pyrotechnics company right now to move forward regardless of the pandemic? And is there a loss to the city economically?
No, the, the $5,000, the deposit, the Pyro Group has been extremely understanding and flexible, that that $5,000 would, would basically get our fireworks show in a box, ready to go. They told me today that they're even willing, if we wanted to stay with Ryan Park and hope it gets, that gets lifted, that they can go all the way to the two weeks out. We as staff would probably need four weeks out just because there's a lot of the movable parts with fencing, porter potties, all the different bands and activities. So it probably would take a little bit for us to be able to cancel and get people to commit without losing those potential funds or the deposits that they'll make us put down for porter potties or anything on that note, bounce houses, et cetera. But they've been very, very flexible on that. If for some reason we wanted to do an alternate date this year, some cities are going to September, October and trying to do a different date just to have a celebration, they could do that. And if for some reason we just didn't do a show but still paid the $5,000, then that $5,000 would still count for the 2021 show with the same price that we're quoted for the 2020 show.
Appreciate that, Mario. I just, I'm a little bit hesitant to, we're, we're not really in a good spot right now to make a commitment and expend more funds regardless, because if this pandemic does, if it is extended and the stay-at-home still applies, then there's, there isn't going to be anybody having fun out there. It'll be just somebody shooting fireworks up there. And I think with the economic constraints, I think we need to keep that into consideration. And of course, you're not there to, to deal with that, but, but I really do think that we should be cognizant of the people that are suffering hardships right now. I think that wouldn't be their first priority if this thing is extended through August. But thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Cordova.
Mario, can we go back to the visual of the ratio? Yeah, that one. So are you saying that if it was on the V and Ocean side, that would be the best visual exposure, is those people within that circle?
They would get the full effects of still the proximity. You could probably still, that's a half mile, you can probably still, still see a mile, then a mile and a half, but it would just kind of be seeing it in afar. I mean, it wouldn't be as, as, as an awesome, you know, show that being there.
Right. I would consider that because it's still within Lompoc. I would not consider the, the River Park area just because you get even less visual, you know, there, and because of the fact that it is kind of more in the county side. But also, if we had it in that area and people aren't paying, so now we'd have to come up with the additional 15,600 of anticipated ticket sales, which we would have to raise somehow through donation or the city's general fund, correct?
Yes, and that was one of the, that neighboring cities, why they canceled, they just didn't feel it was, it was appropriate to go out to businesses or, or local people to ask for donations during this time to be able to do that. So that was one of their major factors of, of canceling.
And who knows, maybe there would be organizations out there that would be willing to donate because obviously that would put a lot of, that would make a lot of families happy. However, also, even if we did have it, my concern would be that because of the economic impact that some of our families within our community are suffering through, and also because of the fear factor, we still may not even get these ticket sales if we had it at the Ryan Park location because either people would be too afraid to necessarily come out and, and do that. Or B, they may not have, they may have been laid off and that's not their main priority, and they'll sit out on the fence somewhere and watch it and not have to pay anything. So I don't know. I would say that we maybe should consider canceling it for this year. I would rather see that $5,000 deposit go towards next year than not making the decision and then losing that money later on down the line. That would be my opinion.
Or just one, one comment, if we do cancel, I would recommend paying then the $5,000 on the fact of we'll lock in today's price for the, for the next year's show. So if we cancel and we don't put a deposit, then we're going to be at a potential higher cost for next year for consideration.
All right. Before we go to public comment, councilmember Mosby.
So in 2008, when we had the downturn in the economy, how, how was the show funded before?
We, we've done the many options, the businesses have been great. There was one year, Emeris matched up to $10,000, then they matched for us to get to $20,000 to be able to shoot the show. Every year, the Sandy Nizbanda, Shubash Indians, the foundation has been great, and their, and their donations have gone from $5,000, $10,000. So it's varied, and they've been one of our heavy sponsors. Our city attorney's office, thank you, they've been a constant, the donation to the fireworks show. So those have been kind of our majors with the fireworks, with the Safe and Saying, the being sold and us getting a percentage, it's, it's, it's allowed us not to have to do the big fundraising, the campaigns, so that that's helped out a lot.
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is that in the past, before we had Safe and Saying, you're at the mercy of donors and you had ticket sales. And in this case here, granted, the ticket sales are potentially gone, but you have, half the money's already, already there. I've got, people have told me already close to $1,000, people told me that they would give for this, just to have. give for this, just to have the Fourth of July celebration. And people felt that it was significant that it needed to be moved forward with and I haven't even really looked that hard, but there were a lot of people said needed to have it. One of the things to look at is, you know, on the east side of town, eventually, hopefully the Bodger property gets built on, but if you establish on the east side of town, some of the problems with having it at the Ryan Park were the smoke that was going and the elevations. But if we got opened up again and we were allowed, you've already established a place where you could bring people to, to have an event at a city park, if you did it at, at River Park. So you're kind of already setting establishment where you set a precedence here. I mean, I guess maybe there's a hope to go back to Ryan Park if it does, but, so there are advantages. One is the fog component. So when the fog comes in, there are some times it moves in from this valley side and moves across. Number of times I've gone to Beatty Park to watch it and that's quite a ways away, just to try to wait, stay away from all the vehicles that show up at the high school and still get a great show. And you're probably, what, a mile and a half at Beatty Park to the high school? So, and that's when they're shooting the lower stuff and there's still a lot of children that come there and have a great time at that distance. So the visibility, is it spectacular right being underneath it? No, but you do get a lot of the effect. And the celebration, remember what Fourth of July is and one of the reasons why we have the bombs bursting in air is about. And I think this is an important time for us to continue to say we are alive. I do believe that we would be able to get the money, just in the, in the short response that I've gotten from people. So we already have half the funds that were collected, that money couldn't be spent for anything else, is that correct? Because it's been spent, acquired for this reason.
Yes, as far as I know.
So that, that money can't go back in the general fund for something else. And you have potentially, because Safe and Saying sales are still going on and you have money, well, see, I have a feeling that's going to be, people are going to be buying a bunch because people are wanting something to do with the Safe and Saying. You'll probably get that much more money raised again, which if we had a gap, we might be able to backfill the gap. If we didn't get the donation, backfill the gap with the money that's, that's paid for the, this year's Safe and Saying. I mean, I don't know how it's totally written up if we'd be allowed to do that, but I'm confident we can get the donations to make up the difference. And, you know, a lot of times, even if you're stuck at home, but seeing that is, people need this. People don't need to just sit there and ho-hum, ho-hum. The comments I've gotten are people that don't really want to see one other thing taken from us.
Mario, have we had the discussion with public safety, police and fire about if this is extended and the stay at home issues stays in place and we aren't allowed to have a large gathering, what traffic control would be like for those that might be getting into their cars and going to either location to try and view and, and what that impact is based on either location? Because I do know events that happen at River Park, anytime there is traffic out there that the sheriff's department and CHP do get very concerned about, the one-way-in-out access. I do know when we had the launch, that the traffic on Ocean became backed up and very difficult. So have there been any discussions about traffic control for those that might come out in their vehicle if we're still under a stay-at-home order?
No, we haven't gotten into the traffic control, but I believe, or fires here, if they wanted to talk.
I'm sure that would be a conversation that we'd have to have because I, I think that this may get extended and that kind of impact would then be something we need to be able to understand what our manpower abilities were as well as our partnerships with those other agencies to help us on that time.
Would you like me to ask the chief, Mario, to come over?
Oh, no, he doesn't have to come over right now. I just want to make sure as we think about this, we think about all the additional impacts that may play out if we choose to move forward on this. And that's one of those that if this stay at home happens, there is a traffic, potential traffic impact of those that are outside that radius wanting to drive over to either location or get close. And what does that look like and what are we as a community as well as our partner agencies able to do with responding to that and having an action plan? Because some of the fallout from events at River from the launch and all that traffic did cause an impact and caused additional traffic issues that we've seen and some not even to the fault of the event, just happened around it and the additional traffic impacted its ability to go smoothly. So I just want to make sure as we move forward, thinking about it, that we acknowledge these additional issues that wouldn't normally exist because normally we wouldn't be having to have this conversation about potentially still being in a stay-at-home order. All right, so let's go to public comment. Oh, councilmember Cordova, sorry.
I was just going to say that I'm not for taking anything away from the public. I completely would love to see this continue to go forward. My only concern would be that even if the stay-at-home orders are lifted, I think that we'll still see some restrictions that will linger in the next months, in the following months. I've heard everything from, you know, cancellation of large gatherings like sports and concerts and all these other things. So that's my only concern is that if we don't make a decision, which is hard to make this decision in such a short period of time and considering that we don't have all of the information in front of us, that would be my only concern is, is that even if we do and having it, continuing to have it in areas where there's a very small population that will get the major impact, people are going to have to come out and drive in their vehicles to come out and see and get the full effect. I don't know, that's very risky for the amount of funds that we would be spending. So that was my only concern is whether the exposure to, to the public for, to actually see something worthwhile if it's going to be there, if the gatherings are still restricted and those people are not, and we're not able to get together as a community and actually go in and, and watch it. So that's my only concern.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go to public comment. Oh, sorry, councilmember Starbuck.
Mario, I need a history lesson. You were here a few years ago. We were going to cancel the Fourth of July, remember? We were going to have it on July 5th. Why? What happened? Why don't you give me a little history on how the city accepted that?
So there was a thought process of, since Fourth of July did fall on a weekend, to be able to move it on an alternate day, so we would have the better attendance and thoughts and that, that it would. Turned out then it was, yeah, the attendance was down, a lot of, a lot of negative press on that. So we, again, elected to keep it on the Fourth of July for, for future, future use.
Any more questions before we go to public comment? All right, public comment is 805-875-8201. You will have three minutes. Please mute your computer, radio or TV to avoid feedback.
Hello, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Hi, I would just like to comment on possibly postponing the Fourth of July festivities. I believe that there's more important things going on right now and instead of, we have to take it as it comes and see what's going on. So just, I believe that that's the least of our concerns. And that's about it. And then also too, I would like to know if there's any way we could get Mosby off the city council. And that's it? Thank you.
Do we have any in-room commentary for this item while we wait for calls to come in at 805-875-8201?
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I would like to stress the point made by Mario in that by paying the deposit this year, you're locking in a price for next year. I think that's an important consideration to take. I would hate to see us not have a celebration two times in the last 200 years plus. I really think that if there's an opportunity to have a celebration, the community, I believe overwhelmingly would welcome it. Just a reminder, the last time this was discussed at a council meeting, John Lynn came up. He had offered to do some fundraising, volunteered $500. I in turn agreed to donate $500 to the fireworks show. So there was $1,000 right there just within two residents. And I'm certain that, I know other residents or other business owners, even in these times, that would be willing to donate funds for this type of celebration, for the celebration that's, I believe, very important to our country, especially at this time. So putting the deposit down, even if you have to change the date, which I would still like to see on the Fourth of July if at all possible and if the stay-at-homes are lifted and social distancing is removed. But if not, looking forward to the following year or even just a big celebration for the lifting of the stay-at-home order because I'm sure people are going to be very happy when that happens. So consider it and seriously, please, thank you.
Thank you. So the number to call in once again is 805-875-8201 and you will have three minutes to discuss the topic. Do we have any written communications regarding this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing no additional calls, no additional in-room and no emails regarding this item, we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. So I agree that we don't want to lose out locking down the price that we've negotiated so that the deposit should absolutely be made. And then also the idea that if for any reason we need to postpone, that rolls over. So that, that's absolutely, I think, something we all agree on, given that's what the funding is for. The second part to this is I would recommend that our motion direct staff to have a conversation with county public fire and our public safety about which location has the better relationship for county fire to approve as well as ingress egress issues and what the best plan is. And at the next possible opportunity, come forward with a plan that recommends which location is better for those impacts if we're still under a stay-at-home, which we might know by mid-May because county has promised us in two weeks to potentially have more information because potentially the governor will have more information. But we're still, again, at the mercy of county public health, which is at the mercy of the governor's stay-at-home order. So my motion would be to definitely apply the deposit of $5,000 and direct staff to continue discussions on both locations with our own public safety and county public fire to determine a recommendation for the best location, given all the impacts of a potential stay-at-home. Councilmember Starbuck.
I would give you a second, but I'd like to include Ryan Park, keep it in the discussion. I mean, there's three options that are there, the fence, I mean, it's, it's there on the table already.
Okay. I'd be willing to, any other concerns? Councilmember Vega.
Your motion, is that to postpone it or it's just to look at alternatives? It's a little vague there from my understanding. I understand putting the deposit back, moving it to another time, possibly next year, if I'm understanding it, or you're asking for more discussions for this year?
I'm asking for more discussions for this year in case the stay-at-home order is either lifted or it's extended and how best we might be able to still provide an event that if people are in their vehicles is a lowered impact on participating because it is a stay-at-home and they might want to get out. So if we better understand what those impacts are, we might be able to better make an understanding of whether we need to cancel this year or we're able to, to hold it. So I think there's some missing answers to best location to still have it this year as well as whether a stay-at-home order is still in place or not.
You know, it's a little vague here. It seems like we have a commitment to make to the pyrotechnics. And so if you make a commitment for the $5,000 for this year or next year, what is the order and delivery time for them that they would absolutely have to know to have it this year? I mean, what is the delivery time for the fireworks if you put in an order? Because if we go over there and we say, we're going to give you the $5,000, it might be next year, it might be this year. How much time do we have to discuss this and make a firm decision before we have a commitment? Because my heart tells me that we're not in a great spot to do this. It sounds like we're pandering to everyone that might want it, but if I put the health and safety and what we're under right now, I can't make that decision. I don't think it's the right decision. I think that Flower Festival is probably going to be canceled. I don't know that yet. But I would hate to just have a drive-by fireworks show because I don't know what, who we're appeasing. I'm a patriot, most of my family are veterans, all the men in the family, but I think we need to make a hard decision. We have weakness in our leadership, so let's make a decision. A decision that's based on today's information, not tomorrow's information. Most of the donors that we have here are out of business. They're not going to give us any money. You're looking for private donations, you're looking for personal people to go out personally and ask for donations when we can't even sell Queens tickets or Flower Festival tickets, Elks rodeo tickets. Everything's changed here. You know, I'm all for the fireworks and I'm an advocate for it. I just think we're, we're stretching what we can do to try and make something happen. It's almost like you're trying to force something into the round, into the square. So I really think that we should make a better decision and, and find out more information on what the commitment needs to be with the pyrotechnics group. They're not just going to sit there and wait. Are they going to deliver it and wait till next year if we cancel it?
Yeah, so the $5,000, the deposit will basically order our show and be delivered. And so, and they're flexible within the two weeks. If we cancel, they get our show, they shelf it until next year. If we, again, two weeks for them, they're trying to be flexible. As staff for Ryan Park, we'd probably need a little bit more than two weeks. But if at the first of June, we say we want to do an alternate of the location, we could call them in June, then they can add, add in the takeaway from our current package and then add a lot more, the bigger mortars and takeaways, some of the smaller mortars. So I would probably say at the beginning of June would be a good date to really, if we're going to switch off to the ag site, probably then do it there. Or if we're going to stay with Ryan Park, then if it's lifted, then we can stay with Ryan Park and there wouldn't be a problem.
You know, thanks for the information. That's additional information that we need to have. The weakness that we're going to have it somewhere, anywhere, regardless if people can go or not, I think that's the wrong message to send. Safe and Saying is, is, is still going to be sold. If we still have this pandemic or we do have some sort of restrictions, let them shoot them at home. You know, I just think that to have a drive-by, that's like, that's like cutting it in half. I don't get excited doing a drive-by. I mean, it's not going to excite me. I'm not going to take my family there, to be honest with you. I just think it's a waste of money. So I think that to say we're going to get donations, I'd like to see the donations. I'd like to see the donors that are going to come over here and say, hey, our business is shut down, we've laid off employees and we're going to still give you money, even though we got a government bailout just to keep, just to pay our utilities. Right now, we're in a situation where we're offering, you know, forbearance on our, on our utilities. I have some information here that says 6% of the mortgages anywhere are in forbearance and that's about 20 times the normal market. Something's going to give. There are people here that have other hardships and we're thinking it's just utilities, but we have to think about the roof over their head, the property taxes, their insurance, their credit card payments. I'm just trying to be an advocate for, in a positive way, but realistically, we're leaders. We're not here just to pander and play politics for something that we know shouldn't be happening. Thank you.
So I would add to my motion that if we don't have the funding by the June 1st date, then we would postpone to the next year because if we don't have the funding, we can't afford to go into the hole. So I'd be willing to make that adaptation as part of continuing to have this discussion in order to make sure if possible, we could provide a free event that didn't require tickets to be sold in some format for our community, knowing the impact it has on us. Councilmember Mosby.
Maybe you should add on as well that the solicitation-
Maybe you should add on as well that the solicitation for the money is involved too, so they can put the word out.
I would say if we were going to solicit for money, that we take it on as council members, rather than to put it on staff's time, because staff has a lot going on right now. And if staff is distracted by trying to raise funds, that's an inappropriate use of their time. So if we're going to make the commitment to identify and find the funds, then it really should come from us as community members, not direct staff to do it, given the additional workload that they are taking on in order to identify and work with potentially getting the...
Mayor, I'll give you a second on that, the motion that you make, if it's appropriate.
Well, I have a motion. I adapted it once, I've adapted it twice. There is a second from Councilmember Starbuck, which was my second. So I would either need him to second my adaptation, or pull back his second, and then provide you the opportunity to second. Does that make sense?
Now, I'll go ahead and pull back, and we'll let Councilmember Vega second.
All right. So now you are able to second.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Second, thank you.
So the motion is to definitely provide the deposit to the pyrotechnic company, to return to council at the earliest convenience and evaluation of the two current proposed sites, and add the Ryan Park into it as a third site, based on what we do know about potential extension of our stay-at-home, the impact the traffic would have on both locations, and the county, and the local public safety's ability to deal with not only the traffic, but the fireworks themselves. And the final part of it is if we don't have funding in addition to the $5,000 donated by June 1st, that it does trigger a cancellation or postponement to the next year, because we can't afford to pull the additional funds out of our general fund reserve. All right. That is the motion. Any questions to it? Okay. Any more questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. The last item is continuing discussion regarding long-term liabilities with California Public Employee Retirement System. And that will be the city manager.
I'm going to start it. So after the last meeting, it was, we, the council went ahead and said, "Well, let's bring this back again", because the very next day, CalPERS was having a presentation on April 8th, the day after our council meeting. So to give you a short summary of the presentation, if PERS ends up with less than their budgeted 7% return, any shortfall will be placed on the cities. That was, the whole thing was essentially saying it's status quo. If we can't make what we make, the burden falls back to the cities. There is definitely more to that. They went in, one of them was the discussion of how they were going to handle another downturn, not knowing this was really happening to this degree at the point, and how they had worked on a plan after the historic recession to try to mitigate losses. So it was good, they did this, because the loss at that date was not as bad as it could have been had they not taken some of the actions that they did and their investments. Just to give you an idea of what's going on, and I mean, you all know it, but the idea, the dynamic and fluid situation we're in, their projections on that date had gone from being down double digits for the year to a few days ago being a little bit positive, to possibly breaking even. You know, it's every which way. It's funny, you know, it's for everybody. If you, I love listening to the financial news. This isn't just historic, this is unimaginable times that we're in. Financially speaking, I don't think anybody, anybody would have ever believed that a gallon, not a gallon, a barrel of oil would have gone, not just to zero, but to a negative. Yesterday, it closed at, well, not closed, but ended up the lowest, was a negative $37 per barrel. They're asking people to take the oil for free if they're allowed to. You can transport it, and you can store it. We're going to give you this, because we have more coming, and we have nowhere to put it. It's, no one could ever have thought that would have ever happened. So these financial times, they're new, they're unknown, and they're, right now, they're ever-changing. And, you know, we're going into areas that no one, no one has ever been in. So you listen to these pundits on there talking about investments, not just CalPERS, but just in general, and which way the market's going. And it's changing day by day. You know, it drops 20%, then jumped back up on the Dow at 24,000, and it's... So it's, you know, we were just talking, Dean and I, you know, the quarterly reports are coming, and that's, we're seeing a dip again, because of course, all the reports are going to be less than desirable. So working with Dean, we did believe we've come up with some options that would be beneficial to the city in terms of helping pay down the UAL, but at the same time, leaving some liquidity for operational purposes too. So I'm going to let him do, he has a great presentation. I'm going to pass it over to Dean to go into all the details.
This is based upon the CalPERS update from April 8th. I'll walk through it. So mainly, they're concerned, like everybody, that their members and their employees are safe. Their, a lot of their employees are working from home. They shut down their offices. They're at about, they said, 75% capacity. Their main concern was to make sure they're serving their members. They're still paying out the benefits. And to manage their investments, which is kind of what I want to touch on tonight. But overall, CalPERS is definitely in a better position than they were in '08. They have a lot healthier liquidity. And I'll go over the portfolio a little closer. They have a more diverse portfolio. And also, they've completely brought the discount rate down to 7%. And their portfolio shows some of the things they've done. I'll go over that. And they've also mandated a shorten of the amortization schedule, which I think they should have done a long time ago, going from 30 years to 20 years. So anything going forward will be amortized at a 20-year. And I'll go over how they're doing that as well. I always think this is a pretty good page to look at. This really demonstrates the volatility of their investment portfolio through the years, relying heavily on equities. Here, you can look at the two portfolios of '07 and today's portfolio. Some of the things they changed is they increased the real estate from 8% to 13%. To me, that gives a lot more stability. They also increased their liquidity, so they had more cash on hand to take advantage of the downturn, and also weather through the downturn. Keep in mind, when you're heavy in equities, and you have a downturn, and you still need to pay benefits out, you have to cash those benefits out at the low rate. So that, to me, was a good move. That's what it cost us, that 7.5% to 7% was that. And they also lowered their equities, which gives a lot more, a lot less volatility to their portfolio. Here's just a snapshot of some of the investments you can see at the top, the higher-risk ones, the equities. You can see how much they had at the, and this is based upon the March 31, their whole, April 8th was based upon March 31 numbers. But they also did a comparative against the peak of the S&amp;P. And you can see how well the liquid, or the fixed assets did, much better. So what does that look like for CalPERS and us, the city? On March 31st, CalPERS was showing approximately a 4% negative. They were down $14.6 billion, and that's from June 30th to March 31st, so three-quarters. What that would have looked like for us as a city is our change in market value of the assets we held would have gone down 8.1 million. Our projected earnings off of that was 14.9, so we would have had to make up $23 million. That would have been a big, big number. So what does it look like last week? And keep in mind, like the boss said there, this week, they've lost all this. They had 4.2% positive number, I was hoping they'd keep it, it'll be keeping a trend going forward. Still, if that was to happen, our market value would have increased 8.6. We would require, have an earnings rate of 14.9, so we would have had to make up the 6.3, which would increase our contributions about $800,000 annually going forward. And I want to talk a little bit about what that means. If you look at how we fund our retirements, about 58% of it is coming from investment earnings, the rest coming from contributions. So this is how they fund in their losses. So if this loss had happened when it did, right here, it would take them a month, well, however long that is, till June 30th, to benchmark that, if you will, and report it out. And this gap right here is two years, where we don't pay anything towards it. They do their actuarial reports, they get our new contribution rates, and then they do the ramping up, or they actually phase it in. They start at 20%, go to 40%, go to 60%. So it's almost like five years, it's really seven years, but five years where we're paying nothing on these debts, which, to me, that's a terrible way to fund your pensions. Yeah, well, we'd be paying on that. I'll show you in a second here what that looks like as a payment stream. If you look at the phase-in, this is just the same thing of that loss that we would have had to have made up. And you can see, the first two years, we pay absolutely nothing towards it. And then we pay a little, a little more, a little more. And we actually end up paying more than just a straight-line 20-year amortization. So to me, I'm not willing to come up with a policy yet, but this is something I think that the city should adopt, that once you have your losses, you need to start paying on them, start funding them, instead of waiting and letting them phase in like they do. I was told that CalPERS will let you get rid of the phase-in, so you would be able to pay, like, on that loss that we had for this year, you would start paying a full payment on 2023, which would save us a lot. If you look down at the bottom, you can see how much these phases are costing us. We did a straight-year 15 amortization, and ignored CalPERS funding rates and the way they're phasing in. We'd save almost $4 million just by changing how we're funding it, and we'd have a lower payment. So to me, this is good stuff, I think. Something to think about. It's something to talk about later on, and ways that we can fund our pension debt, and not pay so much. Here's an example of the current payment schedule, amortized over 30 years. And there's where our current payment is. To me, what we really need to do is, like I said, get rid of that phase-in right there, because really, the big problem that we're having, what scares me the most, is the peak at the top there. If we look at a 15-year schedule, I'd recommend, even if you adopted this, that you still are going to have to pay, that being the current payment, you're still going to have to pay that, get rid of those phases. It's the bell-shaped curve, or in this one, it's straight-up curve. And to me, I'm concerned about this peak right here, where we get to, our payments are almost doubled, well, they are doubled. That concerns me for future councils. I'm not sure how they're going to do that, even with the tax added to it. It's going to be very difficult if we don't try and fund stuff now at a flat rate going across. I did this graph. You could do either public safety or miscellaneous, and just reset it at 15 years. This would give you, you'd still have to, I would recommend the still the same payment number across the board. That would get rid of that bell shape, and it would also get this debt paid off. So when I'm talking about this here, I'll talk a little bit more about how I think we should do that. This one would have almost a $12 million peak, a little bit less than the 12.5 or 8, what was that earlier? Sorry. Yeah, anyways, it's a little bit less on the peak. So the way I would recommend that we would come up with a payment plan and adopt in our resolution, hang on, sorry about that, would be to, as we have a surplus moving forward, to make payments for, if we had a surplus of between 0 and $1 million, I would recommend we put 20% towards our CalPERS debt. If it's $1 million to $2 million, put 40%. If it's between 2 to 3 million, 60%. And 3 to 4, 80%. And anything above $4 million, I would recommend that you just put the whole amount towards CalPERS debt. That way, you'd still be able to pay this thing off quicker, and not get hit with so much interest. An example is, I'm projecting about a $2.5 million surplus in next year. So if you took the first million and multiplied it into 20%, it'd be 200,000. The next million, at 40%, it'd be 400,000. And the 500,000 at 60% would be 300,000, giving you a total contribution for that year of 900,000. And you could put away 1.6 towards your reserves, so... Because it's still really important that we build our reserves up. We're going, my projection is we'll be at 0 at the end of this year. That's going to hurt us when it comes to ratings and trying to get financing for everything at the city. I know it's a lot to digest, and if you guys want to continue this conversation, welcome. If not, you have questions, I'm available.
Councilmember Cordova.
Dean, where are you getting your 2.5 surplus from? Where are you anticipating that to come from?
Let me back up, and I'll... If you, if you look at the 15-year payment stream here, if you, right now, we're running about a 1.5, my estimation, deficit from what we passed. If you add $5 million to that, you're going to be about 3.5. If we were to reset these to a 15-year amortization, you're going to have a gap of about $2.5 million. To me, to me, you need to get rid of this peak right over here, this peak right through here. This is going to cripple future councils. And that's where I'm getting that. That surplus is really going to be that differential in the first years. As they ramp it up, it'll go away. We won't have the surplus no more. But we will have it at the beginning. Even if you back up and look at our current amortization schedule, you can see how it's very bell-shaped. And this peak is at 2030, is that right? I can't see it from here. I believe it's 2030?
Yes, it's 2030.
Yeah, and the other peak is 2032, where if you did a 15-year, the peak is, you know, right about here for the 15-year amortization. So you're, as they phase in all these losses from the recession, from 2014, from these actuarial changes, these phasing in is what's killing us. That's what's going to make this payment still balloon out of control. So we got to kind of get ahead of it. That's my recommendation. And that's where I'm getting that number, is you are going to see a phase-in of these CalPERS increases, and we will have a little bit of a surplus at the beginning of this process.
Okay, so I do, I do understand what you're trying to do, and I do like the idea of what you're proposing. However, when you're talking about the 2.5 surplus, you're referring then to the surplus from, if we were to pay down, initially, there would be a surplus there.
Yeah.
But it's not a surplus within our budget to be able to afford this.
That surplus is based on, if you did a reset on the miscellaneous group, on a 15-year reset, and then still paid down the public safety group. So we're still on course for a 15-year payback.
Okay. Now, you being the numbers guy, I know that last council meeting, you gave us a rough estimate, you said of about $1 million of losses that we, that the city or the general fund would take from the anticipated economic impact of the COVID. Has that changed for you? Are you anticipating a different number? And how are you coming up with that particular number?
If that was a loss, you know, it's really good to demonstrate it by the slide. If that was the loss, I went too far back. If that was the loss, you can see the loss was, let's say, right here, June 30th. We wouldn't have to really start paying on this thing till 2023, and it would be phased in really slow. So it would be almost seven years before we would actually see the increase in contributions that I was talking about. So it's going to be quite a way. So that, to me, is where we need to take advantage of that and start paying down, just like on this other slide, for the amortization of an unfunded portion. That's something we should start paying right away. And that's where that number's coming from. And I'll back up you again. It's from this right here is the information I was talking about. It was a little bit better than this one during my presentation. It was, it was actually in between these two. But that's where the, it was closer to $2 million here that we'd have to make up citywide, and about a million of it would have been general fund contributions. And that would be in seven years where they'd fully ramp it up. So it'd be down the road, but yeah, that's where I was getting that number from.
And I get that. But what I want to know is what your, last council meeting, you mentioned that the, that the general fund would see a shortfall from this economic crisis of about $1 million. So is that still your prediction, so to speak?
Not necessarily a shortfall, it would be an increase in our payment requirement. Does that make sense?
No, what I'm talking about is...
I think we did like, how much were we losing in sales tax, TOT, all that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes. We're still, actually, you know, I don't know where we're going. I mean, I'm looking at the numbers. The cannabis numbers are coming in higher than I thought. Some of the other things are, our overtime was lower than I thought because people aren't going anywhere, no one's backfilling overtime. So I don't have a good number yet. I really don't. I'm still sticking with that estimate, but I think that that's going to move. It's going to move because everything's moving. Now, are we going to do a partial reopening? Is it going to be in two weeks? Is it going to be in six weeks, eight weeks? It's very difficult, but right now, that's still my hand-wave estimate.
Now, the sales tax, obviously, we know that there's going to be potentially a deferment for people to pay that, as the state has given some, you know, deferment or some lenience there. With the gas tax now, I mean, we may potentially see some loss there that maybe perhaps wasn't fully anticipated, but now, how are you calculating? Are you, are you even, have you even started calculating that?
We were seeing prices come down on the fuel tax, and I was anticipating that. The sales tax one, if the governor does do that, it'll just be a deferment. We won't be able to recognize it in this year, but we'll be recognizing, it's just a delayed payment.
Right.
It's, you know, it wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't lose that money, it just, we wouldn't be able to recognize it in this fiscal year.
It impacts our cash flow this year, but it'll impact us favorably next year.
But the fuel is something that was anticipating. I've, I've been watching it come down, and I'm anticipating a shorter, I mean, a less revenue stream. And I'm hoping that they'll, knowing that those revenues are going to come down, that they hopefully will lower the amount that we were required for our MOE to pay for streets and roads, because it's unrealistic when, you know, you're not getting the money, but they still want you to pay. But I'm not sure if that's going to happen. That, you know, that's up to the state.
And my concern would be that the sales tax, that we're not fully bracing the impact of that, we're assuming that that's going to stay pretty regular, but I don't know how much we're really factoring that with TOT being down so much, even if they flip the switch and they, and the stay-at-home orders are lifted, I don't think that you're going to see tourism bounce back as quickly as we would think. And a big portion of our sales tax is also consumed or brought in by our leisure guests that stay overnight at our hotels and the gas as well. So I'm concerned with whether we, as a city, are really budgeting correctly for the sales tax and that we're not really looking at it and thinking, well, TOT is one thing. At the last meeting, you said, well, TOT only forms a certain percentage of our general fund. I get that. But the impact that those travelers have goes beyond just the TOT.
Yeah, and the sales tax, we met today with HDL, and they gave us their analysis. We're kind of a very lucky city in the fact that we don't, we aren't super-heavy dependent on tourism. But you're seeing a lot of oddities. Pete Ruper, who's the chief USB economist, was talking, he did some slides that I thought were very interesting on where everybody went during this pandemic. He bought the, where your smartphones are going. And you can see where everybody ran to Costco and Walmart, and they just stacked up with all their stuff, big old peak, you know? And then they just dropped, you know? But there's a lot of stuff that actually still went back up more, and that's like home people. A lot of people are staying at home and working on their houses. So it's very difficult to get your finger on what is going to happen. And fuel is one of our biggest sales tax. And it's down, but we knew that. We knew that going into this equation, and we knew we were going to miss our marks there. But that being said, you're right, it's very difficult to figure out what impact this is going to have on us. I think overall, this will probably be one of the best cities that fares through this. When I look at other financial statements, you look at Los Angeles, when almost 50% of their stuff is TOT and sales tax, 50%. Ours is like 20. That's going to help us weather through this a lot. And a lot of cannabis shops, believe it or not, that's going to help us a lot. People are staying at home, and they're buying that product. So, yeah, I don't know what it's going to look like. I think we're going to do a lot better than a lot of other cities, like solving, Santa Barbara, Los Angeles, Anaheim. Those cities are really taking a beating. Santa Monica, you know, the city manager resigned because they're beating on them so much, because he was telling them how bad it's going to be, and it is going to be bad for them. They're very, very dependent on sales tax and hotels and way more than we are. That's a very good question, and I don't know the answer to it.
So I'm going to stamp, I'm going to timestamp me personally, your comments, because I really think that it's great for you to be so optimistic. My concern is, is as a community going into having adopted a deficit budget and us already having issues, to think that we somehow, being off the beaten path, are going to bounce back better or are not going to have the impacts that some of these major cities are having, being off the 101.
We're going to feel it, though. Don't get me wrong, though, we're just not going to be as bad as a lot of those other cities. We're very fortunate the way our structure is for this city, but we are going to feel it. It's still a big component of ours.
And if we had at least an action plan for the financial stability of this city that we could show this community, I would believe those comments even more, because I would say, well, yeah, we, we have this plan laid out of how we're going to, but we don't. So we're trying to solve one issue, and I get that, but that's like being in a boat and having one big hole, and you still have three or four other holes that you still got to, so I'm just saying, I really appreciate the optimism. I just want to get a truthful, and I'm not saying that you're not being truthful, but I would like to get a truthful picture, and I feel like we're never going to get that as long as this city doesn't have an actual plan for how we're going to restore our, our funds and also how we're going to improve going forward as we continue to mount this debt.
And you're right, it's a double-edged sword. You know, we really need to concentrate on our liquidity now to try and figure out, make sure we can make it in case this goes on longer than we think. But we also need to be cognizant of what our future is looking like, so it's tough. And I, I don't have all the answers, and, and to me, this is my recommendation. But, you know, people in the past have made mistakes. If I could predict the market, I wouldn't be here.
Right, and I appreciate that. But again, also looking back, and I wasn't on the council at that time, but one of the things that constantly gets thrown back is the fact that a few years ago, the city manager at that time, or the finance director at that time, predicted that we were going to have this surplus and, and we could afford these raises, and then it turned out that for some reason, that didn't happen. And so I'm just concerned when we talk about our reserves potentially being at zero by the end of our budget cycle, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing where we can, we would be able to afford, you know, to have. Without planning, I don't see how any of this will happen.
If I may, I've asked all the, all the council, all the department heads to put together sort of a continuity plan, actually decreases where they can see reduction. So I'm working on that right now. We can schedule for having a council agenda item, I can put something on. It's still a work in process at this time. It's been a very tough situation to go through, because we've been, as Lompoc, we all know, we've been cutting for multiple years. So we're down into like the cuticle pieces of, of what is, what is necessary. You know, quick example, we have a building official who is also the only plans checker, who is also our only building inspector. God forbid he gets sick or goes. So, so we've gotten to that point where we only have one person, you know? We don't have multiple people for a backup plan. So that's why it's, it's taken a little longer, because we're trying to figure out if someone goes out, what can we do? But I have that, you know, in the process, I understand what you're saying. I wish it was an easier type of situation where we could say, well, we have extra cushion over here, and we can release those people or whatever the costs are. But I think when you see when we come back, it's, it's going to be a very difficult discussion on how we can reduce even more from where we are at this point, but I have that in the works.
And also, that's, that's why I recommend if we are going to try and pay down the CalPERS, that we do it in a ramping. If we don't have the money, we don't pay. I think we should not tie both of our hands and pick a plan and be responsible and pay it down, but also have the plan of not to give money to CalPERS if we don't have money, because we, this could go on for a while, and this could be way bigger than I think, you know?
And at some point in time, I would love to see the plan include restoration and infrastructure for this community, because at some point in time, if we don't put it all together in the same plan, we're just doing one thing and leaving other things that are going to continue to be depleted. And so when I hear, you know, Mr. Troop talk about the fact that we're already, staff-wise, we're already bare bones, and yet we're going to come back with a way to, to become even more, I get that. That is an impact to our community, that's an impact to the services, that's an impact to our residents. And I'm 100% for figuring out a way to pay, to pay down CalPERS and to get that debt. But I also would love to see us come together with a solution for how are we going to ramp up again our, our reserve account? And how are we going to improve eventually, at least a long-term plan? How are we going to improve the infrastructure of this community? How are we going to ever get there? Otherwise, we're just tackling, and I think that that's a little unfair to the current residents of this community that have to live within whatever, I guess, lifestyle or whatever quality of life we're going to provide them, which is not going to be very great.
And I agree. When I look at the financial statements, and I've been looking at them for a while, I see areas that we need to work on. And I'm kind of disappointed in that this COVID thing's hitting us when it's hitting us, because I had a lot of studies that we were almost completely done with. I don't want to bring back to you guys, so we can work on a lot of these plans of trying to fix, you know, ways of doing our correct impact fees, our correct master fees. So, yeah, I agree with you.
I just would like to see, I would like to see us also tackle the areas, the other areas where we are providing the proper police, you know, for our community, that we are providing some kind of quality of life elements like parks and recreation and all those areas. Otherwise, these residents aren't going to benefit anything from what we're doing. We'll be paying down something, but they'll continue to live in, you know, not so great conditions.
One of the, the issues that I'd like to address here is, we're short on certain departments, but we do have a city manager who has discretion on hiring and giving raises to people he chooses or deems eligible. And I don't know that we have any kind of rhetoric from you, Jim, you know, saying, hey, you know what, I'm expecting you to be frugal and concerned during this time, not just because we are short in department heads, but we're talking about from, from where you sit. You know, the discretion that you have. You have a lot of power sitting there without coming to us, and I'd like, we've never asked you directly, we're not even sure if we should put something, some sort of moratorium on that, or if it's automatically expected. You know, I think that the public would like to know that we're being frugal and we're all on the same page here, because economics is key here. No matter what you do there, we need that revenue generation to come in. Otherwise, our economics will collapse here in this city if we don't get that stay-at-home order lifted soon. So along with Councilwoman Cordova, it seems imperative, you know, that along with this, that we're clear with the public that says, hey, if we were to take a 15-year amortization schedule, does it free up any money that we now have, that we're currently paying? So if you wouldn't mind humor me on how we're making our payments to CalPERS at this time, if we have the sales tax measure that was going to be, that was intended to pay back some of that and fund some public safety, some parks areas, you know, we were looking to maximize the usage of that money. The pandemic is one thing, but I'm talking outside of the pandemic, how are we making our CalPERS payments?
Right, right now, the only thing we're doing to, to save money on the CalPERS is, we pay it all in July. We prepay everything, and that saves us about $200,000, $300,000 a year. The, the idea behind the 15 is to not pay so much interest over the next, instead of spreading out over 30 where they keep compounding all that interest, is to save the money that way. Yeah, I'm not sure, what other, we, it's up to you, you are the council, you guys can, you guys can just say, no, we're not going to do any of this, we want the money to stay in reserves, you know, or we can not reset any of them, that's up to you guys. I don't recommend that. I think we need to be cognizant of what's happening in the short term, but also be cognizant of what's happening in the long term. We need to make sure that we, I recommend you make about a $10 million payment towards the UAL across the board for the next 15 years. That'll pay it off. However we do it, my recommendation to doing this is to get a little bit more liquidity to get us through this COVID issue. And that's why not locking them both in. That way, you will have some liquidity. If we don't have the money, we won't pay it, we'll keep it in the bank and try and weather through the storm. So, yeah, there's a lot of flexibility, and there's a lot of different options, but I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah, you know, along with this, this is twofold, because this is really important, what we're doing here, and I appreciate your recommendation, but without revenue, none of it's going to work. So we need to work on our economy. I understand Councilwoman Cordova says we don't have a plan. So basically, I'm not willing to, any longer to wait and just sit here and react to the news of the day. It is our duty as leaders to be more proactive and start developing, developing a plan that addresses the possible increase of cases as well as the eventual lifting of the stay-at-home order. Many in our community will suffer from the losses of jobs, homes, businesses. Again, it's like Councilwoman Cordova, I'm going to repeat what she said, they're not just going to bounce back just immediately, and we need to actually make sure that we're partners, not just at City Hall with the department heads, with also with our businesses in general, okay? I believe that, yes, out of precaution, they put a stay-at-home order, but there's some political agenda with what's essential and what's non-essential, as you guys can see downtown. I mean, there's a lot of people that with common sense and being safe, that they should have been able to open, especially now, now that we know that it wasn't as bad as predicted, even though it's still bad. Health is the number-one concern, but economics is where we get our money, where they keep their self-esteem, they fight depression, they fight just total going bank, totally going bankrupt. There's large companies right now that are going bankrupt. So I think that if we could together all develop a plan or come together to figure out how we're going to help the community get started in the event of, since you're the chief health officer for Lompoc, Jim, I think that we all can get together, and we need to address, just because the governor says, okay, you're lifted, or Santa Barbara County doesn't have such stringent guidelines, can we help them? The fire department, they can help us, okay? They can come in and they can say restaurants can open, maybe the occupancy level changes, maybe our, we give them a couple of things, because these are independent contractors that have put in their, their blood, sweat, and tears into these businesses. You think they're not going to comply to get some more business. Most of the people that are out there, and I'm doing this, it's all related, because it's revenue generation for what you're talking about. But basically, most of the restaurants, 20% to 25% is based, is usually what they project for to-go orders. You know, right now, it's probably a little bit higher, but there's no way they can pay their debt, and they can't pay their bills. They're hustling just to keep their, their people employed at, at best. You know, what happened with the bailout that the government gave us, there was no direction there, so a lot of people thought that was a freebie. So there's no responsibility here, so we can do better. We can go and we can say each individual business, regardless, I'm not sure if the state's going to come out there, because I'm trying to help what we're doing here. We need that, the economy to open up as soon as we can with precautions, with restrictions. We don't want anybody to get sick, but, but there's no reason now that we know kind of what we're dealing with. We all know that the, the vaccine, when they come up with it, it's probably not, you know, I'm not a health officer, but I have been listening into all the webinars. It's not going to cure it probably, okay? What it's going to do is we're going to test it to make sure it's not being passed on. So again, I think that's going to be a key plan. We talked about department heads, and you've had their plan. We don't have an outreach to the community right now to say, hey, these restaurants can open when the stay-at-home is lifted. We don't have any opportunity, these hair places can open without getting in trouble, so that we can, again, with social distancing, with spacing, you know, maybe the restaurants can't let as many people in, maybe they have to have sneeze guards, maybe they have to do all this. But again, it's, it's all related to what you're doing here, because without that revenue generation, we can't solve that problem, because the sales tax is only 1%. Can't solve it all. So again, I appreciate and I do respect your opinion, okay, on the, on the different options. It's just we're, we're in a point to where we can't go, how long can we go, Dean, before we're just done, okay?
You're absolutely right. I mean, I thought the market was overvalued, and I never thought that a pandemic would have caused it to crack. And it's like, it wasn't like it slowly came down, do we anticipate, it's just like a light switch, we just got turned off. And how would we come back up? It's definitely something different that we've never seen before. I know, to me, this, this could be long, longer term, but to me, the overall picture that I'm trying to look at is something generational in nature for this CalPERS debt that we need to fix. Not just in five, 10, this is, to me, a fix for 40, 50 years for the city, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate you, man.
And even though this pandemic is going to be devastating to a lot of people for a long time, it's still short-term in nature as far as the CalPERS debt and what we're looking at as a forecast going forward.
I got you, and like I say, it's imperative that we as leaders, we have these discussions, not just in City Hall. I see what's happened here, you know, they've tried to, under the COVID-19 guise, they try to devalue us to a point where all of a sudden, well, you're an outsider, you're coming in, and I kind of resent that, because we're a leader just like you guys. You guys get paid more, but at the same token, I think that we're just as entitled to be here and help lead our city as anyone else. So I appreciate what you're doing. I just wanted to see with clarity that after 15 years, the payment is, I don't know that we really got a firm answer that you're saying we're making payments.
But when I talk about the payments, I'm talking about the unfunded liability from tier one.
Okay.
Right now, we're paying about $10 million to CalPERS for the pension benefit. 6.5 is towards that UAL, the tier-one payment. The remainder is normal costs, meaning that when a person works a year, we pay for that guy's pension going forward. And since they've enacted PEPRA and stuff, we've been paying really good, we don't have really an unfunded liability for tier two and three. So when I talk about those payments, that's what I'm talking about, is to pay off that debt, that $93 million that we owe. We're supposed to have $300 million in the bank for our pension, we have about 206, so that's the differential, is that right there, so.
Thank you so much.
Real quick, you probably already know it, but like for anyone else, the tier-one or the original employees, the original classic employees-
2.7.
-that are gone.
Exactly.
So they're not working and paying into it, so when they receive that increase in the benefits and then they've retired, we're all having to carry on to pay that back, because they had already retired before they could make all those payments. So I just want to make sure, there's the tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, so the tier-one's the most expensive piece for everybody, and that's the one, when you go to try and pay something down, you want to pay down your most expensive mortgage, you know, before you hit the really cheap one.
And those are debts that started in '99 and 2000, and we're going to be paying on them until 2042. I mean, that's what I mean by this is a very long-term generational, but we need to get ahead of it, so it's not keep biting Lompoc in the butt, you know?
Yeah, at least CalPERS isn't taking a dump right now, so that's good, thank you.
Yeah, but CalPERS, you know, there are a lot of volatility with what's going on right now. I think there's at least a 4% to 5% shift in CalPERS' investment portfolio. Overall, I like what I saw in their investment portfolio, they've done a lot of things to mitigate against downturns, so, some good news.
Thanks very much.
Councilmember Mosby.
Liquidity, and, you know, I was one of the guys pushing hard that we wrap these, both these up in 15 years and seeing that we can't see where we're going right now, understanding that it wouldn't be prudent to put both of these plans in together, and you need that liquidity for what you can't see. Would it be, and provide enough liquidity if we just took, say, the safety plan at this time and put that in the 15-year schedule? Would that provide enough liquidity to just put that one in the 15-year and then enact one of your, a policy to help pay down the other? It gives you the leniency that if you don't, then you don't.
To the general fund, they're almost the same impact. You're going to see a little bit more liquidity by going with miscellaneous, the public safety is a little bit bigger component to paying on CalPERS from the general fund, so, but the, between the two, there's not that much. I just use miscellaneous, because miscellaneous is one that benefits all the funds, all the utility funds and everything, if we were to pay that one back. This ramping here, to me, is basically a way to do both sides, but not tie our hands. This ramping, to me, is just in case the market, COVID keeps going on, if we don't have the money, we don't pay. If we have the money, stay on course.
And it would free up a little bit of money to give you some breathing room, the city manager's head, not his head, yes?
Yeah, it would. In fact, I first was, what you had suggested when Dean and I were talking, is looking at the safety plan, but by going miscellaneous, you do hit electric, water, so, you know, hitting all of the funds versus just the general fund, so you're sort of spreading that wealth over a bigger base, if you will, so.
Yeah, the utilities might need a little extra money for some of the projects, just as Councilmember Cordova was saying. So, I mean, also as well, you see a year or two from now, future councils could look at the potential for putting those in a payment schedule like this, should they see what's going on. But rolling into safety, we know what we're doing. It is, well, the old amortization was $55 million that we had, and there would be plenty, of course, don't really know, but they said the first years would be a $3 million ramping up to 4.6, and that would cover, and you already have a part of that, you're already paying with money set aside, so it would free up probably $2 to $3 million a year?
Yeah, it could. My estimate was about 1.9 back to fund balance if we had what I thought was going to happen, if they were to close last week, but I don't know what's going to happen going forward, it could be less or more. But I really think that we should try and adopt a policy that if we don't have the money, we don't pay. And just on one plan for now, this totally changed my philosophy. If this didn't happen, I'd be saying, oh, no, that's hit the reset, let's go for it. But this is changing what I'm seeing, we're going to run out of money, and I'm suggesting that we do something to keep some liquidity, just to make sure we can make it through this, to still stay on course.
Would it be a good idea to just, like I say, take the safety plan and give us the ability to go forward?
It doesn't matter either plan, I think it's barely a difference. Like I said, the benefit goes across both plans. I know people like to see the public safety get paid down and get their cost of public safety down. To me, it's up to you guys, I can do it either way. It's easier for me, actually, to do the public safety, because I just have to worry about one fund.
Right, and other ones, because of allocations and such, it's very-
The other one, I have to actually figure out what all the payments are, allocate the payments are, do a revenue stream, and it's a lot of work, it takes, that's why I was almost hoping that we could make a decision soon on which plan we want to do. I don't care either way, but I, it's going to take me a while to do the allocation methodologies and actually apply an increase in the payment stream and make sure it hits all the funds that are actually benefiting from those resources that are allocated.
And then deriving a policy, as you stated there, of being able to wrap up and pay this off in the future?
And to me, this is just a temporary, until we can figure out what's going on. I still think we should do 15, but this just allows us, if we don't have money, we don't go broke.
You had another policy, though, you were mentioning before on-
Funding, I think for two-
To fill up the gap on the-
I think that's-
Miscellaneous, would you recommend that we, well, you'd have flexibility, which would give you that, right?
If you're talking about how they phase it in, yeah, that's one of the things that we probably, again, we probably need to make sure that we can afford it, but if they would have done that in '08 and '09 and said, all right, just let's not phase stuff in, let's not elect it, not reamortize, they actually reamortized longer, we would have probably paid half as much or owed half as much, we'd probably owe about $40 million instead of $93 million, just by those payment, those phase-in payments found our losses. And it's mainly because of the change in assumptions where they said they're going to go from seven and a half, well, actually, it was about eight and a half, now they're down to seven, and also the mortality, all those are increases in contributions, but they're phased in, like, they just keep paying interest on top of interest on top of interest, and they say, okay, now you can start paying.
And before long, you get to a point where you can't, you can't keep up. You can't keep up and pay it off, so. I guess what I'm asking is a plan going forward, could be a viable plan to pay the 15-year amortization for the public safety, continue on with the other, implement a policy to try to wrap it up, I mean, the city manager himself could come together with that on that and come back with us?
We can do that. I still have a lot of work to come back with, adding all the appropriations, adjustment appropriations for everything that you mentioned and had motions before, add the sales tax and everything else, and if you guys want to, you can make recommendations going forward of any other adjustments I'm missing, basically like a midterm, you know, adjust what we've seen so far and get an idea of where we need to set our appropriations for our next budget cycle. Or I should say, the second half of our budget.
I guess, in final, just in short, it's a doable, from what you see this time, this is doable?
It's definitely doable, and it's definitely still being responsible and keeping some liquidity in the bank. Like I said, if we don't have the money, I see if we did have the money and things started going back to normal a little bit, we'd still put a funding of 1.9 million back. It could be less, we'll still be positive overall, especially if we don't have the money and we hold on to it, just to make sure we can get through this with an accelerated plan.
Councilmember Cordova, and then we do still need to go to public comment.
Dean, I have a question. So in this scenario, this would be an internal policy or plan that you would suggest that the city would have and that the council would have, correct?
I would recommend you adopt it as a resolution, as what our plan is to move forward, along with a resolution to reset from the 30 to 15 on one of the policies, either miscellaneous or public safety.
Okay, so this wouldn't in any way then be, because I know in the last meeting, we talked about the possibility of a 1-15 trust, so that would no longer be a part of this, correct?
That's an option that you can still do.
No, no, what I'm asking for is, in this scenario, that is not the case.
No, that's not an option.
And what would be the benefit or the difference if we did this versus a 1-15 trust, in your opinion?
Not much of a difference. The only thing is, you'd be out of the CalPERS investment pool, and you could add a different investment strategy or style to turn and mitigate against what you think CalPERS would do. CalPERS, like I, when I showed you the portfolio, they have a lot of real estate and equities, and they have some fixed, it's pretty good balance, it's way better balanced than in '07 and '08 where they had so much in equities. When you have a lot in equities, you get more rate of return, but it's way volatile. When you see that graph with the blue, I mean, when they saw miss marks of 42%, that's what killed the city. If that happens again, we would be annihilated. So, to me, to see what they did with the reducing it from eight and a half to seven, and to see what they've done with the change in their portfolio, I'm okay with that side of it. The funding side, I'm having problems with.
But as a 1-15 trust, you're locking in a certain amount of money, putting it into the trust, and that's what you're, that's what you're using to make your payments, whereas in this, we're saying that if we have it, we'll make the payments, if we don't, and our budget, every budget season is maxed out, then we could potentially not be making any payments to CalPERS.
When you have your CalPERS, we have the liability of the $93 million that's on the books. You could put money in a 1-15 trust, and you have to use it for pensions, but you can offset that. So you could bring that $93 million down within a different vessel, a different strategy of investing, but it can be used just the same way as you did if you give it to CalPERS or you put it in a 1-15 trust.
Right, I get that, okay.
Councilmember Vega.
Hey, Dean, and the 1-15 trust, I understand you guys can invest it and put the money wherever you think you might get the greatest return, but in all honesty, are you going to be able to beat the return on the 1-15 trust?
Against the 7% CalPERS? I think they have a very good portfolio. To me, I would want to establish a 1-15 trust once I'm close to my funding ratio that I want for stability in the future. Put it in something actually more conservative, that way when the market tanks, you have the same thing like they did with the increase in liquidity. You would have a good liquidity, you could say, all right, the market tank, let's buy while it's low, or let's change our strategy. Like right now, if you had a 401K and you're all in treasuries or something, I'd highly recommend you push them in the market. I'm pretty sure it's going to go back up eventually. So it gives you different strategies to invest. Do we have that expertise here? I'm not sure, you know?
Well, yeah, and I guess that's what I'm saying, are we going to have to pay somebody to do this, where our return's going to be decreased? And then also, can you give me a scenario of, like you said, how that would work, okay? You gave me in general how a 1-15 trust, if we had some liquidity, or we go to a 1-15 trust, once we get some liquidity, I think that's what you said.
I would say, like, if you're a city that, let's go back in time, in 1999, we were 150% funded in some of our pools, our CalPERS account had 150% funded. I would have took some of that 50% that's on top and put it in something that's more stable, that has less volatility, that when the market does tank, you have cash on hand that you can take advantage of the downturn. We had everything in the market, and when it went down, we lost a lot. I mean, we lost 42% in '08, that's a big move down.
And there are quite a few companies out there, just like if you had an IRA or 401K that can help manage, you sort of pick, if you go in and see your advisor, they go, do you want, do you want to go aggressive, mid, you know, do you want all cash, you know, as you get older? Like my mom, I just moved a lot into cash, because we didn't want to lose it on her. So we would go through that, and, you know, unless Dean has the time, I don't think he does at the moment, but you find the best market manager out there and then decide on what kind of plan you want to set up. And, you know, I went 30% into equities and so much into real estate and so much over here.
Just like a 401K, I got you.
Yeah, it's the same thing, but the good part of it is, it is a restricted trust. So 401K, you know, when you take it out of your own, you can go buy a car, you can go do whatever, but with the 1-15 trust, it can, once you put it in, it can only go to the PERS paydown or an OPEB paydown, but it's allowed to be done a little different than if we did it in Leif, which has all these other restrictions, it's very, very small.
I got you, and right now, we're, we don't know what the future holds, so we're not trying, we can't, we don't want to lock it into something that we-
And anytime you hire an investment person, they're going to ask you, what is your acceptable level of risk? Do you want a really risky pool that does really, you know, has a higher rate of return? Or do you want more safety? It's a strategy.
What do we do in general here?
Right now, we're in-
As far as risk, no, as far as risk. We play the game, do we play the game like everybody else, where you put a little bit in high risk, a little bit in moderate?
I think that CalPERS is trying to play that, that's why they have a higher liquidity number, that they're trying to strategize, and they came out with a lot of papers in June about this and what their strategies are, so when the market does do a downturn, they can push some of that cash into the market and take advantage of depressed investments, and as the market comes up, they benefit way better.
And then they pull out some of that, put it back to cash.
And that was my question, okay, do they pull out? They just-
And they have a whole number, they have a whole number of different style of strategies when they stay to the course, in other words, when they, like I just said, that was one of them, that they have a bunch of them, and when this gets triggered, we do this, when this gets, they didn't really have that in '08, '09, they just said, oh, let's roll it all in equities, and that's the highest rate of return, that's the best thing, and usually for long periods of time, that's the best way to go. But for cities like us who have to pay the bill, the volatility was just, it's too much. You know, I'd love to see us have a 401K where we can do a match and take the volatility away from us and give it to the employee. We'll give you the same amount of money, but if the market goes south, we're still going to be okay, you're going to have to figure it out, but usually that person can also adjust their risk based upon how old they are and invest and take their risk level where they want it to be, so, I don't know.
Thanks, appreciate it.
To that point, Mr. Albro, can you speak to CalPERS' recent hedge investment adjustment they made in March and their loss of-
Well, they hired a new investment-
Chief investment.
Chief investment, thank you. And he, they had shorts on the market, so if the market was to go south, they would win. You don't normally do that on a long-term investment, so Mr. Bing took it all out, worst timing in the world, just did it right before the market crashed.
Yep.
Right before, lost a billion dollars. Man, I'd hate to come to work when I lost a billion, especially here, you know? But, you know, he was doing-
He was recently hired, so, yeah, he still works there, so, yeah.
There's a lot of controversy about hiring him anyways, but I think he was doing the right thing. You don't normally hedge a long-term investment with short-term instruments.
Just bad timing for his decision.
Yeah, bad timing.
It needed to happen, you're absolutely right, I think they'd been inappropriately taking risks and-
That's a bad day at work.
But that was a bad day for him at work. All right, so we'll go to public comment, your number is 805-875-8201. You'll have three minutes to speak on this issue. Please remember to mute your computer, your radio, or your TV. Do we have any email commentary that came in on this, city clerk?
You have one from Mr. Fink, and it was given to the public, it was put on the website and presented to all of council.
Thank you. Is there in-room commentary? Please come to the microphone. Again, your number's 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. So over four, five years ago, and past governors came out and announced that CalPERS was going to take a hit, and most municipalities ignored it. And over the last several budget cycles, I've heard city manager and finance director talk about, if we didn't have this debt, our budget wouldn't have problems. If we didn't have this debt, our budget wouldn't have problems. In my business, I often get families that come in and they have multiple credit cards and auto loans and other types of loans, and they ask me, well, what's the best way to, what's the best way to make my money work and get ahead? And my friend says that I should take out of my 401K and pay off my debt. And I'm losing my return on my 401K, but I'm I'm reducing the credit card debt. And then they refinance all the debt on their house, and they go because it's a lower rate. And so now they're paying interest on interest. So in the end, you can sit and you can debate back and forth about which mechanism is the best, how to try to outdo the market, which is what puts you in this situation in the first place. Or you can simply get the guaranteed rate, which is that interest you will not pay by paying the debt. So whatever you do, don't continue to do what all the past councils have done and is not pay the debt. Because it's that interest and that accumulating debt that is the cause and the root of all these financial problems. Figure a way to adequately address the debt without putting the city in a liquidity problem, but don't neglect the debt. You're just postponing, again, what's been done to create. And by trying to be too creative, you risk as it's been risked to put you in the place in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. The number is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, and you have three minutes to speak on the subject. Seeing no calls come in, we will return the discussion back to council. First off, thank you to Mr. Albro for working to address one of my major concerns now that we've entered a pandemic and it's affected our budget and our fact that our general reserves is so low. So being creative, addressing the situation where we need to rebuild that general fund in order to weather not only this storm, but prepare for potentially ongoing storms, potentially with this downturn in the economy, and we don't know what it's looking like and how long their roller coaster is going to exist. So I appreciate you repositioning yourself and addressing this in a new way because I know we were headed down one path, and this has caused us to think another way. So thank you for that. I really appreciate it. And I think addressing at least one of our larger debts aggressively and being able to provide some liquidity is really important, not only for us as a council to help start the rebuild, but for future councils to be able to have some flexibility. So thank you for that. Councilmember Cordova.
Dean, can you put the slide back on of what your?
It's purposeful.
What your proposed plan would be, where you had that if you had a one million, you would pay this much? So if we had a one million dollars left over in our general fund, we would pay twenty five percent of that towards?
So, yeah, if you had, let's say, a surplus of a million dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you had a surplus of one between zero and one million dollars, you would take twenty five percent of that and send it to CalPERS. If you had, let's say, two million dollars, the first million would be at twenty five percent. The second million, well, that's the wrong slide. Sorry. More aggressive plan. But that's too aggressive. That's the one I was proposing. Sorry. So, yeah, if you had a so I was using the example of two point five at the bottom. So if the first million would be at twenty percent, the between one million and two million would be at forty percent. And then the two to three million, there'll only be five hundred for this example, would be at a sixty percent. So the more surplus you have, the more responsive you'd be, the more you'd pay towards CalPERS.
So keyword for me is surplus. I one hundred percent like this. I one hundred percent support the payment of the debt. I think it's responsible, and I think that we need to address it. I do believe that if we're looking at the scenario of people having credit card debt, if they just target getting a loan or somehow paying off their credit card debt, but they never actually work on their spending habits and they never actually budget themselves, they will be in that situation again. So for me, simply addressing one thing is not enough. How do we ensure that we are going to have that million dollar surplus? And I think that that's what this equation is missing for me as a council member. How do we ensure that we're going to have that surplus to be able to make this happen? Because I want to see this happen.
Well, we're I'm saying we're doing a reset on just one of the plans. And if and I don't know if we'll have a million dollar surplus based upon what I'm seeing. I think we will.
So if you're painting a picture for me and you're painting a blue sky, but all I'm getting is the top portion of the picture and the bottom is scorched, I'm never going to be able to reach that blue sky. If if there's a landscape, then there's a great chance that I'm going to reach that blue sky. But if it's scorched down at the bottom, so I'm not seeing the bottom half of this picture. So. But I but I but I'm one hundred percent on board with you. I just would like to see a little bit more. And I know it's not budget season, but I just want us to also consider because otherwise, we're just selling this hopeful dream that this is how we're going to do it, and we're going to have a surplus. And but the reality is, it could be different. And there could be no surplus.
But also, you mentioned earlier, too, you know, how do we the spending habit? When they enacted Peppra, that hopefully fixed the spending habit. So, yeah, good point.
If I if I may, real quick, but one of the things I think you brought up is so on the next budget cycle, and we can start it earlier because what I think you're talking about is something that it's going to take longer. And I don't like the word zero based budgeting, but to come forth and present, you know, we can we can distill this down. But come forth with a more detailed presentation, you know, department by department. So questions can be asked at at length from each of the areas. But have the different department heads present what what do they need? You know, that's what a zero based budget really is, is just going back, saying, here's what I need to survive. That brings back the ability for council to question by line item. But it is a very long, long process. So we'd have to start the budget much earlier than before. Or there's modifications to that where we can go back and look at, you know, we know how many people are there. So that's really, you know, sort of a non question because we're so short right now. But all of the other line items, we can come back and present, and each one would have a description as to why. And then the council gets to question, why is that? Why do you have that on there? So it's it's a way to do it. It does take a long time to go through it, though.
I I would love to see us begin that because I think that we're in that financial crisis, that we should be planning. Right now, we should be planning. I may not be here in November or December or whatnot. But as a resident of this community, I want to know what's going to happen, and I'll still be watching. But but I would love to see that happen, and I would love to see us because I having come in new to the council, I kind of begged for it on the first round. And being so new, I felt like my words were falling on deaf ears. But I want to see a budget that actually has reserves built into it or that actually has infrastructure for these departments, for whether it be equipment or whatever the case may be. We need to start so as the finance manager, as the city manager, as a whole, we need to figure this out. And we should start doing it now because we're we're in it right now.
Councilmember Mosby.
To answer your your question about projects being done and built out, I've been asking for three years for capital improvement plan. The old one expired, I think, in seventeen, right? So been asking for that as well. They did try to implement one without presenting it to council in the budget three years ago. It was a five year plan that we would have not seen anything of. We were able to stop that, asked for it to come back so we could see what they were doing. So not very transparent with that type of movement. We did have a general fund, reserve fund policy, believe it's at twenty five percent. So we have that policy there that unfortunately was not really respected in the past. The complications currently have have caused something different. But I think, could you guys come back with a reset of of a safety plan? What would you need next meeting? Or could you do it? How much time do you need to do this?
Oh, okay. I could find out and and put it on the next agenda if it needs to be faster. But also, there's a lot more work that I need to do based upon what, you know, has happened. You know, like I said, the sales tax, I need to come back with appropriation adjustments for that. The appropriation adjustments for getting rid of the vacancies, appropriation adjustments for one point seven. And then, yeah, if you guys can give me direction on what you want me to do for a reset on one of those.
Come back just just with a reset like this. Come back with the other later.
It would probably have to be either the second meeting in May or in June.
I was gonna I was just going to say, from the our calendar time, it has to be done by Friday. So.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't be able to do it on the next.
Sure. And I'm asking because I've I've heard conflicting where you had to have the reset done by in within by June first or set up. And then I've heard also July first, so I'm not sure. But I make sure we have plenty of time to do this this way because a lot of the people realize we did it. And I think they'll be understanding that we can't wrap it all up. So if we do one of the plans, like the safety plan, get that that gets a little bit of the credit card cut up, so to say, moving forward with this. Gives time for us to see what's going on. Future council needs to do it again. They could do look at again and do the second bite of the apple later if they needed to. But is there how much time would it take for you? Could you at the same time bring back this policy that you're mentioning here?
Yeah, I sure could.
Of course, policy can be changed by any council, but it would be a good methodology coming forward to try to do this, give you some leniency and reason. If you need more money for something else, you can explain that, and we can try to direct. The things that I've seen in the past is it's been difficult for the city to have the level of discipline and say no. And there were a number of years they were. They wasn't too long ago, we had an eight million dollar reserve. And that money kind of dwindled away. And we didn't see some of the revenues, overestimation of revenues and such, that didn't work out for us. Unfortunately, we have a pandemic knocking on our door, and we do have something else that we've done to do that. So I guess I could make it as a motion to come back here, the second meeting of May, with the reset of of the public safety plan along with a policy that establishes. I don't know what you'd call it up there. What do you call it?
Pension pension policy.
Yeah. Okay, make that motion.
I'll give you a second. Councilmember Vega.
Your motion, Councilmember Mosby, it's kind of open ended, okay? So I'm hoping that we do come back with some sort of constraint or plan. I think I've seen a lot of you that profess as budget hawks, and you say there's spending and there's frivolous spending. But we're at a point now where we can actually implement a policy to control some of that spending. You know, why would you leave it open ended and say, oh, future councils can fix this? We need to give them money. It doesn't. It doesn't sound very fiscally responsible. If that was your money, you wouldn't do that. You wouldn't just let anybody spend it and tell you what they're going to do. Councilwoman Cordova, she painted an excellent picture, pardon my pun. But, you know, it's true. There's no plan. There's no fiscal responsibility included. Somebody can actually go and spend it all, and no money would go toward that project, okay? You don't have a policy in place. So I see you shaking your head. Show me what the policy would be.
Okay, if you go to the amortization schedule from CalPERS on the fifteen year payoff for the safety plan. So I'm asking that that's locked in. This is locked in. This is a plan. So it breaks it all the way down on the.
I'm talking about the city spending plan.
That 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 locks that in. They have to pay that portion of the of the sales tax would have to go to this.
Do you see the do you see the choices on reserves?
So the second, anything that might be extra, if they should have some extra.
If they should.
Right. Then you have a policy plan that's right there that's very descriptive of what you would do so that you get aggressive on paying down the balance on the miscellaneous and the general fund and that. So those I think those are very good movements forward. And as we progress on, if we see there's more money or less money, it can be adjusted accordingly. I think Mr. Albro's come up some a good mechanism here. You see what he says, if you have a little bit extra, not all of it's going away to pay in the unfunded obligation. But you're having a little bit there instead of there. The first million, two hundred thousand. Second second chunk of a million, four hundred thousand.
I think I think the last part of it's kind of hype because the surplus is probably never going to get there. Unless you can show me numbers that say we have a four million dollar surplus.
Well, that's the hypothetical. If it happens, the problem is, nobody can tell me if we have enough to do both of these.
Gotcha.
Nobody can tell me if we can do both.
I understand that.
If in a year, we see that we can do the second one, then the council at that time can make that decision a year. Right now, with what's happening right now, I don't feel comfortable in wrapping both of these up. The the finance director does it, the city manager does it. So I think it'd be prudent for us to do this.
Of course.
Take one bite of the apple solidly and put another policy together to try to tie it up.
I I think my next question is, Dean, the first initial payments under this policy, hypothetically, how do they compare to our current payments to CalPERS, the amounts?
Well, we'd be resetting one of the plans, public safety.
Right, right.
So our payment would go up about eight hundred to a million dollars a year towards that. And then this would help us tackle the miscellaneous as well.
Because we're able to use the money somewhere else, is what you're saying.
If we did, if things are worse than we think and we don't have the money, then we wouldn't pay the miscellaneous portion.
And I understand we're in an extreme measure, but I think that without the I'll just wait for it to come back then. I just had to question that so that we have a full circle plan, not wait for the next council to shore up the boat.
And also, I don't want you to think that, you know, if there's a surplus that we're going to spend, we're still going to stick to our budget. It's we're in the middle of the budget. So the only thing we're going to bring back to you is variances or changes that you can approve.
And one quick one is, we need to, we absolutely, as a city, need to rebuild reserves. So for me, if you had excess, you know, it's it's up to the council to decide. But for me, without having reserves, I don't sleep much at night. So we really need to put as much back into the reserves as we can until that's built up to our requirement. And then we can all sleep more easily.
You know, Mr. Tripp, I get it, and I understand that we have to keep going with business. Again, we need a plan for this economy when we get going. We need to build up, or we can't just count on something status quo. Since all the what I've heard is the government's not going to give us any money. They don't help us. I've heard that, just like with the county with the riverbed cleanup. It's the same rhetoric. Okay, so basically, what I'd like to hear from the city for my vote is that we have a policy that's consistent with paying off our debt responsibly, that you're not going to go off and go on a spending spree like you mentioned, Dean, the way those payouts are being. But, you know, we need to be fiscally responsible for a certain period of time, or it's not going to work.
And keep in mind, I I didn't put this anywhere, but this is meant for July one to June thirtieth. I'm not saying implement this on right now. It would be predicated on the tax being part of this equation. Because if we only have two hundred thousand surplus, I don't want to give twenty percent of it to CalPERS on June thirtieth because I'm really going to be concerned with how much liquidity we're going to have in the bank.
And I totally respect your answers, and I'm just not.
I'll put that I'll put in a staff report.
I'm just not buying someone else's statement that we're going to do this and we're going to do that in the future council. I'd like to see it from you guys, a commitment to come back. Otherwise, why would I vote for it? Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, and we've had questions. So if there's no other questions, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes five zero. Any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
The final oral communications regarding city matters is now open. You have two minutes. The number is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Again, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. You have two minutes on this communication. Please remember to mute your radio, your television, or your computer if you call in. While we wait to see if there's any calls, I'll open it to in room commentary.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Long Poak. I don't know how many of you, I'm sure you all have, have seen the recent studies that came out of USC and the LA County Department of Health in which they cited that it looked like there was a substantial more amount of spread than presently was thought. The positive part of that is that that then would significantly decrease the mortality rate from COVID than was previously thought. Part of my optimistic side would like to think that if the spread is greater and the lethality is less, that there may be a slim chance that the stay at home order might be lifted sooner than later. But with restrictions, that being said, knowing that so many families are suffering, so many businesses are suffering, so many people are suffering, that you start to have some type of plan or coordinated. I I don't know how this reopening or the lifting is going to occur for our community. But it would be great if our leaders could start to discuss that. I don't know if there's if there's any coordinated effort with the with the county health department. But at least prepare us. But at least prepare us. What I'd hate to see happen is suddenly we realize that data starts pointing to the, to the more positive, or to the negative for that matter, and then we're not prepared. And then it takes another two, three, four weeks to coordinate the gradual lifting or, or, or the sudden lifting of the stay-at-home order. Also, with our city employees, um, looking at what's happening to the prison, do we have the appropriate measures of, of like tracing track for people that are coming in and out? Uh, we need, we, we have vital services like trash, water, electric. We need to make sure we're properly protecting all them employees, um, because a city without services is gonna be terrible. Thank you.
Thank you. Did they hang up?
Sorry, they hung up.
All right. We did have a caller. The number's eight zero five, eight seven five, eight zero two seven one. While we wait to see if there's a call coming in, yes, we're in direct communication with the county public health. Unfortunately, as much as the governor has said, local authorities may lift. It is actually local county public health that is in control of lifting any stay-at-home orders, or who returns to work, and then what those look like. The county public health is working to formulate a committee made up of both electeds as well as staff and those in the business community to provide insight and advice. They are looking at modeling it potentially on what the Slow County proposal may be in the next week or so. We are in direct communication with them. We are advocating for what needs to happen aggressively and sooner. And, um, hopefully, they will have more information for us sooner rather than later. Unfortunately, at the board of supervisors' discussion this morning, they predicted a four-to-six-week timeframe. That is too slow, and sadly, not aggressive enough. So I immediately had a discussion with several other mayors, as well as some of our electeds higher up, about what we could do to advocate for a more aggressive timeline. Seeing no calls, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
If I could make a suggestion, Mayor, that if we could get the public health to communicate with us directly about our community for this, and maybe that's what your statement meant, uh, or what, what it stated. We're an individual community. San Luis, from what I understand, has one of the most stringent stay-at-home, regulations at this point, from what I understand. Okay, so I think everybody's gonna go for the strictest. And if I could, I have two things here. Mark Schnipe, the economist, uh, wrote here, I think Dean wrote, that we have the other guy, the Peter Rupert, and this is the other guy, you know, how it would recover from the pandemic re-induced recession. State governors first need to relax the emergency orders to shelter at home and allow theaters, restaurants, bars, gyms, public gathering places, and sporting events to commence under a responsible scenario where public health is generally protected. Here, the nation and state recover. How the state and nation recover is dependent on a host of assumptions that are rapidly changing, and we just need to be on top of them as the city of Lompoc, instead of following. Again, I have to say that we need to lead. So I'd like to be a part of this discussion for businesses. They're waiting, they're hoping that we have a plan, not just waiting for someone to tell us what to do. The other thing is, uh, I have, um, a message from community partners in caring here in Lompoc. They're looking for volunteers, they deliver meals to seniors, handicap people, they're here locally. So, again, there are people out there that need our help. They deliver meals, and they can't go anywhere. So if you do, uh, feel inclined to help, they did ask me to put out the word there. They're here locally, they're in Santa Maria, and they're in Santa Barbara. So, uh, again, it's a great group. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just to follow up, uh, all of the council members, including the mayor, have been given the legislative briefing phone line and call-in times for those discussions. And in addition to those discussions, I regularly commu, communicate directly with community, public health, county public health, and the, uh, board of supervisors representing our area and not representing our area about concerns specifically to Lompoc. If I had not advocated aggressively and early, the prison numbers would not have been separated out. They were going to lump those in. So I am absolutely doing everything I possibly can at any moment I'm involved in any discussion to advocate on behalf of Lompoc. It's a difference from those surrounding communities. The fact that we're a full-service city, the fact that we are predominantly where all of the blue-collar workers, the service industry, everything that provides support to the other communities predominantly live here, and that we are still very much a very busy community, both trying to balance the stay-at-home order, while also provide all the services to all the other communities, that it be either plumbers or HVAC, or providing county, uh, personnel going to work. That that's, that's our community, and it is being impacted by the prison outbreak in a way that probably the only other communities that might be seeing some of this are some of the North County cities, but that, we are predominantly that. So, so realize that that is absolutely the first thing on my mind in every discussion, in every call, in every meeting, is that Lompoc is not gonna be left on the shelf behind everybody and not gonna wait for other people to dictate to us, and that we have to be a part of the discussion from the very beginning, because our community is going to be addressed very differently. So just wanted to reassure you that that has been my number-one goal during any of these discussions.
And I appreciate that, I, I really do. And that's all I want. I wanna make sure that we have a voice. The fact that the public health is going to follow a model from San Luis tells me that San Luis is ahead of the game, building a model. I can tell you from the real estate community, San Luis put down everything they could and did everything they could to put real estate out of business. I do not condone that, that area, because we have, on the, as a board member, you know, I've had people that are from, there are the board members from San Luis, Santa Barbara, and there are Lompoc boards, and San Ynez boards, and San Luis is the most stringent. So I think that we need to have a voice for our own community, because our people need us. Okay, if we're gonna just be followers, then what the heck are we doing here?
It's, it's a model. They're trying not to start from scratch. So what they plan to do is utilize a model that has already been created and adapt it to Santa Barbara County. And that's why I think it's really important for us to advocate, so.
Again, thank you so much, okay? I appreciate the clarification.
Councilmember Cordova.
I have a council request. Um, I know that at the special meeting that was held on March 27th, we rescinded the city manager's emergency services, um, in regards to, um, evictions, residential evictions, and it also included commercial evictions. Obviously, the state did not affirm commercial evictions, and I think that that's something that Lompoc really needs to bring back, hopefully at the next meeting, if I could get the support of my council. And bring that back, because I do think it would make a difference for, we have a lot of small, we don't have a whole lot of big box store, and, and big corporate America. We have a lot of small business. So I really think that we need to bring this back and, um, and, and, and create this so that our local residents, um, who are business owners, are able to at least shield themselves somewhat with this. So I'm looking for support on this.
Um, I'd give you a second. Unfortunately, we're not getting a third on that. All right. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
I represented the city of Lompoc at S, the last SB CAG meeting last Thursday. I too have made several phone calls and contacts to the county supervisors, and I recommend other people of the council as well do that. Uh, they are receptive, they have some information that can help, and it's important that they are heard. Also, contact the congressman. That's important as well, uh, as well as our state assemblyman. They're very responsive, and they can help, uh, provide some answers, and they do wanna hear from us as well.
Thank you. Um, the list of normal responsibilities is all still there. As a representative for Northern California Power Agency, the Tank Commission, any of those committees are still going on. There are remote meetings, and, and we are, I am participating in those, as well as regular legislative briefings, regular contact with our elected officials, both at the state and the federal level. And then just trying to be a advocate for our community, reaching out to some of the nonprofits that are servicing our community, finding out information to provide to the hotline. So once again, reminder to the community, the city does have its own hotline. It is manned Monday through Friday from nine to five. That number's eight zero five, eight seven five, eight zero seven one. Or you can go to thecityoflompoc.com's website for additional information. The county's, um, toll-free number has been closed, but they are referring all calls to the 211 number. That provides you not only information regarding COVID, but any of the services that might be available throughout the county. If you're needing assistance as a senior, low income, heat programs, whatever it is, 211 can direct you to potential resources and assist you. Our phone line also will also, as much information as we've been able to acquire, provide it directly or provide you a phone number to contact local nonprofits. The publichealthsbc.org site is updated daily at 5:00 PM. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they have a 4:30 briefing that goes out to the public via their, um, website or through TV SB 20 on YouTube. And, uh, the Bureau of Prisons, bop.gov, updates their numbers at 3:00 PM. They don't say whether that's our time zone or East Coast, so I'm not quite sure what 3:00 PM they mean. The difference is their numbers are not the same as public health, county public health. And the reason that was explained to me by the warden is that the tests are sent out to the public health department to run, and they have their results sooner, and then the test results get sent back to the prison to process. And the federal website doesn't get updated locally, it's through a PIO with the federal level. So please visit those sites, please look at those if you're wanting what's going on at the public health level. Unfortunately, there is an outbreak at the prison. They are looking to stand up a field hospital and provide services out there to reduce the impact that it's having on our local hospital. They're in that process. They haven't fully stood it up yet, so we will keep our eye on it. The prison reassures me that they are taking measures to make sure their staff are properly trained, have the enough PPE, and know to quarantine while they await their test results. And once those test results are positive, to remain in quarantine. So we will continue to stay on top of that. So to all of you, thank you. Uh, continue to social distance. Stay at home if you can, work remotely if you can't. And you're working, remember, masks are about us being asymptomatic and potentially sharing that with someone else. It's not about preventing yourself from getting it. So every opportunity that you can protect your fellow citizens, residents, coworkers, it's important. Wash your hands, stay safe, be kind. We'll adjourn to our next meeting, May 5th, 2020, at 6:30.